That's, that's who they are.
Well, they're, they're, Pete, you want to introduce me?
Okay.
Mr. Regan will introduce.
Excellent. Alright, we're good to go?
We're on.
Awesome. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our school committee meeting. This is so fabulous to see all these wonderful faces in the audience. Thank you for joining us this evening. We understand you have something special for us and we can't wait to see it and hear it. So we start every meeting by reading our vision statement. It's December 12th, 2018, and this is the vision statement of the Ashland Public Schools. The Ashland Public Schools will be a model district that embraces the academic and social emotional growth of all students through a supportive, collaborative, and challenging experience. Our students will develop into lifelong learners who will contribute positively to society. This meeting is being recorded by WACA cable TV, so anything you say or do is going to be on TV tonight. We start every meeting by reading the items on our agenda, so the items that we hope to cover this evening are our call to order, our opening procedures, our agenda review and adoption. We have recognitions and student presentations from the Warren School PBIS, Student Advisory Committee. We have a school committee recognition. We have a moment for public comment, so anybody who would like to say something, any member of the public who likes to comment can comment during that time. Warren School update from Mr. Regan. We have a response to intervention RTI presentation. We have a social emotional learning presentation. We have accountability DESE, some information on that. We have administrative items which include the superintendent's report, the assistant superintendent's report, warrant approvals. We have a couple of policy updates on JC.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna defer those.
We're gonna put those on hold?
Yep.
Okay, we have some policy updates we're gonna ask to put on hold until a future meeting. We have consent actions which include approval of minutes from November 14th, 2018, and November 28th, 2018. We have acceptance of gifts and donations. We have committee reports of activities, member updates, action items, and then we will adjourn. So is everybody good with our order business this evening? Excellent. So we will start with our student presentations and recognitions.
First, I'd like to introduce Mr. Pete Regan, Principal of the Warren School, to introduce our students and class.
Thank you. We're, we're very excited to have Mrs. Diamond's class here tonight. Mrs. Diamond's class made this presentation during one of our whole school assemblies. During our whole school assemblies, each class over the course of the year will come up and make a presentation that focuses on one of our four core values of being kind, safe, responsible, respectful. Tonight, you're going to see a great presentation from our second grade class, all on being kind.
Excellent.
You can invite Sally's, yeah? James.
You know these kids?
Yeah. James, come on in. Five.
Well, hello, come on in. Hi there. Want to come in a little further so you all can fit?
And then you can go in two rows, Sally, it'd be great.
Hello, everybody.
You want him to face you, or do you want him to face the crowd?
Well, I want them.
You want to see him, I know you do.
I want to see them, but I want them to be able to see themselves on TV later, so.
Camera too, so. Miles, which one do you prefer?
There's a lot more.
I think they should look out at their families.
Yeah, the parents are that way.
Look out at your families, and then when you're done, turn around so we can see all your beautiful faces. How's that sound? Alright, sounds good. Okay, we're ready when you are.
Room four, like, thank you for all that you do to help Ashland Schools. Here's some thank you cards at me.
Oh my gosh.
Awesome.
Oh my goodness, these are beautiful. Thank you so much. I don't think we've ever gotten thank you cards before. This is the best day ever. Thank you.
Was this the surprise yesterday you were talking about in class?
Oh my gosh, it is an amazing surprise. And you all signed one yourselves?
Awesome.
And they're colored so beautifully. Thank you so much. It feels so good to be recognized like this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shane does a good job.
Kindness is muscle, work it out, got hustle. We can show you the way, God bless it every day. Kindness is muscle, work it out, got hustle. We can show you the way, God bless it every day. We can give her more time for you because I got time as well. This is something to keep in mind, so many reasons for being kind. It's all about exercise, don't run, walk, or fight. That means how we should, just be kind, just go. Kindness is muscle, work it out, got hustle. We can show you the way, God bless it every day. Kindness is muscle, work it out, got hustle. We can show you the way, God bless it every day. Every day.
Turn around. Can we see your faces for a minute just to tell you something? That was amazing. You sounded amazing. I couldn't see everything from here, but I'm gonna watch the video later. Saying about something really, really important to all of us in this district, and you're teaching us how to do that so well. Thank you so much for the cards and for taking time out of your night to entertain us. This is the favorite part of any meeting that we ever have is when students come to talk to us or sing for us or teach us about something, so you guys are amazing. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming in.
This'll, this'll be the most watched.
Thank you for the amazing cards.
Yeah?
Is that, is that yours?
Yeah.
Nice.
Oh, nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, guess what?
What?
Do we have to go to bed yet?
No.
Nope. What?
What?
Ten.
That's later than mine.
Well, thank you again so much, Mrs. Diamond. Thank you for bringing everyone in and Mr. Regan.
Very talented group of students we have.
That was awesome.
And thank you, parents, for coming out as well.
Thank you.
And you don't have to stick around for the next two hours, but you're welcome to.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. And we'll see you tomorrow.
Have a great night, everybody. Thank you.
Not for why.
I got your card. Thank you so much for your Christmas card.
Well, and you should see the parking lot too, right?
It'll be a really good, loud Christmas motion.
Hi Sally, thank you.
Well, that was, that was great that you could do that, but.
One day.
Yes.
Very. It's like, can you try to be from or my name, and it's like faint.
Same.
Nice job.
Great job, bud.
Amazing.
See you, Kate. Thanks.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Ladies, how are we gonna follow that up?
I was just gonna say, that is a tough, that's a tough act to follow. You better come next time with this song and a dance.
I was saying, hey Jen, are you doing a dance with your presentation, Jen?
No, Jen, yeah.
Exactly. Only singing and dancing from here on out.
Perfect. Written twice.
All we got.
Yeah.
Oh, gosh.
So listen, another one of our favorite student groups is here, the Student Advisory Committee. So if you guys want to come up and fill us in on what's going on at school.
School Committee Advisory Council. Technically, we are a council.
You're welcome.
Nicole's gonna join you?
Yes, she is. Hi, everybody.
Hi there.
Um, a lot has happened since we saw you back on October 10th. Um, first of all, we went on the Make-A-Wish trip. A couple of you joined us. It was awesome. Um, they said we were one of, I mean, obviously every year they really appreciate us coming down, but this year they said it was one of the best times, and people who have been volunteering there and seen up there before, they actually came out to talk to us and said that we were one of the best groups that they ever had, you know, because we not only showed how much like passion we have for helping the kids, but also we just have a really good bond with each other, which made it even better when we were helping the kids. And it was really emotional, but so awesome, and I'm so honored that I got to go on that trip twice, and I can't wait to see what everybody else does in the future with that. And hopefully, people go on their own time and it grows to be even a bigger and better thing. So yeah, that was awesome. Um, we had the juniors versus the seniors, and Powderpuff, um, the seniors won, the seniors. Um, it was really cold. I actually didn't play. I sat up in the booth keeping score, and that was a smart decision. Um, so, back in November, NHS, the board, goes to a conference at Holy Cross every year, and this year, we decided that we would like to present, um, why I picked the charity, the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, um, which is because we lost a member of our class, and, um, we really wanted to advocate for mental health awareness, and it was a 45-minute presentation. We had super awesome, um, feedback from all the kids, and it was a little emotional, but in a good way. You know, we really hit home our idea of like mental health awareness. It was really about that, and advocating for mental health and speaking up for you or anybody else, or, um, and we asked people to come out and help us with our fundraisers, and we had people even from Western Mass saying that they would come out and help us, um, and our big fundraiser in April, so I'm super excited for that. Um, going off that topic, we have a bowling fundraiser coming up, so it's at Bolero in Shrewsbury. Um, and so, we're having teams of about eight, could be less than eight, and we're inviting NHS kids, and some of them are taking their families, and we can't wait for that, so that's gonna be actually after midterm. So midterms end, Saturday comes, go up for bowling night, there's Buffalo Wild Wings down the street, so it's gonna be awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. So we had our Thanksgiving pep rally. It was very peppy, very fun. Um, so we had some events such as teacher dodgeball, which I had never seen before, and it was hilarious, and I absolutely loved it. And Mr. Vier and Mr. Adams participated, and it was fantastic. Um, we had chair racing as well, and there was a little mishap, but it was still fun. Um, we had pie in the face, which was fun to see our classmates get pieed by teachers. And hallway decorating, the sophomores won this year. Um, seniors came in last place, so go us. I think, was this like the third year? Third year in a row.
Yay.
Um.
What was the theme?
The sophomore theme was.
Ashland Horror Story.
Yeah, so I didn't get to see any of them, but I heard they were cool. Uh, and then Stuko is holding Clocker Idol next week, so that will be very fun. We had, we, um, saw the, what's it called? Commercial this morning at the meeting, and it was very funny, so season five is coming up. Uh, last week, Amnesty International held an event called Write For Rights, and it was an event where students wrote letters to other countries to help people who were wrongfully jailed be freed. So there were already like template letters that people have written, and we just had to copy them down and send them into other countries. Um, and another thing that has gotten approved was the band and chorus field trip. Um, we will be going to Philadelphia in April, and the chorus and the band will each be performing and getting adjudicated and getting, um, a medal of some sort if they place, and that should be fun. I did it my freshman year and it was awesome, so I'm looking forward to that.
Thank you.
So this Stuko has made, um, snowmans and snowflakes and are hanging them around the school to show like their winter spirits. Um, so we had, last week, there was breakfast for the students of the term. So if you were like nominated for respect, responsibility, integrity, achievement, and involvement, you'd go up during 10-minute break and you had like a little celebration, and a lot of kids had fun at that. I heard like a lot of positive things about it. And so, also the Principal Advisory Council was having a meeting Monday, last Monday, and they were talking about an X period, which is like an all-school study period. And so, Ms. Sinker and a bunch of other teachers, and I think two students, went to a neighboring school and saw how their X period worked and seeing if we would involve it here. Um, and SAD, which is Students Against Destructive Decisions, are going to do a Project Purple, which is, um, about like not using like drugs and alcohol or substances at the last basketball game of the season. And it would be, we would be selling shirts, we'd sell food, we'd do like a little presentation during halftime. And then, winter break, obviously, everyone's very excited for that, and I think that's gonna be awesome. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thanks for those updates.
Yeah, good stuff.
Olivia, is that it? Okay, just want to make sure.
Okay, next up, we have, um, school committee recognition. The school committee, um, well, I'm gonna call them.
Okay, great.
Um, the school committee, um, started its own, um, little recognition. Um, we started some discussions last year about being able to recognize people from this committee, um, in the district that are, go above and beyond. So, Mr. McKay, could you please come up to the podium? You are the recipient this evening of the school committee's recognition award.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for everything you do, and I just wanted to say a few words for anybody who might be watching, who doesn't know who you are and what you do and why we've decided to, um, recognize you this evening. So I'm gonna read this. Andrew McKay, and you've got the whole crew here with you.
You want to introduce everyone, Andrew?
Yeah.
We know him, but.
This is Bryce.
Bryce.
This is Drew, and this is my wife, Joanne, who's late from work.
Well, it's nice to, it's nice to have you all here, and then you can all listen to how amazing your daddy is.
Thank you.
So, Andrew McKay has been a wellness teacher and coach at Ashland High School since 2011, but often he is so much more. Andrew goes out of his way to build relationships with all students. Andrew plays an unofficial leadership role in his department, bringing ideas and concerns forward on a regular basis. Countless parents comment about the commitment he has for all students. There have been many lunches, preps, and other personal times, often away from his own family, that he has given up to help an AHS child in need. He visits injured and sick students in the hospital. He checks on the overwhelmed students to see how they are doing, goes out of his way to include everyone. Mr. McKay makes sure students with different learning abilities are included in all aspects of his teaching and coaching. He is a model for what inclusion is all about. The school committee would like to recognize Mr. Andrew McKay with this coin, in appreciate, I'm gonna bring it up to you in a second, in appreciation for all that you've done and continue to do for the students of Ashland. You're a role model for all, and we thank you for your work, and, and I'm honored that I get to personally hand this to you tonight because I've personally seen it myself. You showed some love to my own kid, and you've got your own kids now. There's nothing more meaningful than when somebody extends themselves to your child that doesn't really have to. So you are a really special person, and we thank you very much.
Thank you.
An honor to be able to recognize you. Thanks for everything you do for Ashland.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all that you do.
Anyone want to comment? I don't care.
Yeah.
Andrew, Andrew, hold on just a moment, please.
Well, I just, thank, thank you for, for reading that, and, um, I wholeheartedly agree with that. And I, you know, personal too, for my own children I've gone through, and Andrew puts in so much extra time, and look at the young family he has, and he's so dedicated. Um, he, beyond his position, he doesn't have to do all those extras, and his door is always open. And I know if, if a student doesn't feel comfortable seeing our adjustment counselor, Andrew's door is open, and they, they do go there, and then he checks in with our adjustment counselor when that happens. Uh, you open the, the weight room early in the morning for any student that wants to come in. He's there early, he's there in the summer. The dedication you, you give to our students is incredible, and you don't have to do that, and he does. And, um, and just as a coach too, he always reaches down to the younger, the youth, and even before we had a middle school team, you were always going down there. You would check on who was coming up. And I think as a coach, that's fantastic. I think they should all do that, and, um, and then you're always available. You know, he, he's always available to, to the students, so. It's above and beyond, and I'm not sure if everybody knows that.
Thank you very much.
And you don't have to, and it's really greatly appreciated.
Thank you, I appreciate this.
I'm, I've known Andrew for 20 years, and, uh, the apple doesn't fall far from the tree. So your mom and dad are amazing people, and I know that plays a part, but also just seeing you grow from like the annoying freshman that I knew you as to. Very middle brother. Back then, um, to just this incredible man who I cannot wait for my boys to walk the halls of Ashland High School and know that, like, Chase already knows who you are, and for them to know that they are going to have a safe space. And even the conversations we've already had about, you know, give him to me as a freshman and he could still play football if my kids never even touched a field before, and like, he's thinking about a kid that's not gonna be at the high school for five years, and just, Andrew, I'm so incredibly proud of you and so glad you're part of this community.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Thanks, Joe.
Goodbye.
Very much.
Have a good night.
Bye.
Bye, guys.
Bye, bye.
Bye.
Don't stay too long.
See you later.
Steal that baby.
Okay, we have a Warren, uh, we have a moment for public comment. Is there anybody out in the audience that would like to share anything publicly with the school committee? Excuse me, seeing none. I just didn't want to pass on that opportunity.
I didn't, I, I didn't.
Before and after, Mr. Kendall?
I didn't, I didn't even get to tell my story about how Andrew came back to Ashland, but we'll have that conversation someday.
You could have.
No, it's alright, so.
Yeah.
It was a lot of hard work for me to get him to leave Framingham State, so, when he was coaching there, but it's worked out for us.
It's a sharp house. Well, thank you for that. Mr. Regan. Warren School update, please.
Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update. As you saw from, from room four and Sally Diamond today, um, so much of what we do at Warren School always comes back to our core values of being kind, being safe, being responsible, respectful. One of the major changes that we've made this year, and it's really taken all of our staff to make this happen, is every classroom starts their day with a morning meeting now. Um, so no classroom starts their day at a special subject. Um, we've made it so that the special subject teachers have their prep period first thing in the morning, so that every classroom begins with teachers greeting children at the door. Uh, it looks a little different depending on the rooms, where some of them will say, you know, it's a student's choice to have a hug, a high five, or just a wave hello. Um, and others have dances that they'll do walking through the door. Uh, it ranges from room to room and students' needs as well. That's an exciting way for us to start the day where every classroom is starting with that calmness and the importance of relationships. It then moves into right after the morning greeting to now every class sits down and they sit on the rug together having a meeting, and they, uh, work on some skill-building pieces, but it's also just about getting to know each other. It's teaching our students that they make eye contact when they talk to each other, that we listen to one another, that we ask follow-up questions and how to do that, and that's going right from our kindergarten through, through grade two. Um, as you saw in this presentation that was done during our assembly, it's also something that's going throughout, throughout. Uh, tomorrow, the PTO is bringing in a speaker who's coming in to do a trick show on a bicycle, but it's all about kindness. Um, so it's that reoccurring theme always about how we treat each other and how we're all one, so that we can teach them. It's not just us here at Warren School, but us to the town of Ashland, and you saw that tonight with Sally's class as well, of thanking the school committee for the work that you do each and every day. Uh, so that's, that's just something that we're very proud of. Uh, Mrs. Altman, who was here earlier, and I were talking just of the pieces that we're most proud of for this year, and it's that shift that we've made of starting the day and making those strong connections. Um, and the hope is that every one of our students are feeling, just as you all feel about Andrew, that they're feeling about that way with their teachers now.
That's awesome. Yeah, that is good. Yeah, it's good to hear.
Any questions of Pete? And we're gonna get some, a flavor of some of the things that are happening within the schools through the SEL, but RTI and that conversation as we move forward tonight, but, um, you know, before Pete leaves, I, you know, it's been a challenging year for, at Warren for Pete personally, and, you know, tomorrow I want to wish you the best.
Thank you.
Uh, his son's, his final radiation treatment tomorrow. Um, we didn't know, uh, Pete's youngest son, um, is going through a tough time with, uh, you know, a form of cancer, and, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's been a hard year so far, uh, and, you know, it's, uh, thank you for the effort that you're putting in. I know it's, it's, it's a challenge.
Thank you.
On both fronts, so best of luck tomorrow, you and Quinn.
Yeah, thank you very much.
And Dawn.
From all of us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, and for you and your family.
Yeah, and, and I will say, on, on behalf of my family, w- we do feel the love, um, from the entire community, uh, and the support. It's been amazing. Quinn's been tolerating everything extremely well. Tomorrow will be the last of thirty-two radiation treatments, uh, so that started at the end of October, and we've been going Monday through Friday. Chemo-wise, we're about halfway through, but things are looking great, and he's responding really well. Uh, so the hope is, this spring, I'll be back to say that we're, we're done with all the treatment, and, uh, and he's moving back onto, back onto being in school every day, all day, and that'll be a great thing for our whole family. But thank you all.
Excellent.
Thanks, Pete.
Thanks, Pete. So, the remaining part of the evening is a lot of sit and get.
Presentations.
Which we don't normally do in schools anymore. But, uh, you know, I've got, you know, Mr. Vieira and Ms. Cutler here to do some presentations with regard to our RTI, social emotional learning, as well as the, the new, um, Department of Education, um, accountability structure.
If you can't put it into a jingle, we don't wanna hear it.
Yeah, well, no.
You don't wanna hear me say this again.
Doctor Vieira does actually like to stand up and sing. I have actually seen that. I think you have as well, Mr. Kendall. And, uh, we actually just prefer you stand and deliver.
Thank you very much. Uh, before we get started on this, I wanna just touch on something that Mr. Regan said. Um, we started this year with responsive classroom, and we're training thirty teachers a year for the next three years. And, uh, it's been absolutely incredible program. You know, Pete touched on it with morning meeting, but I know we thanked them in the past, wanna thank them again. Decisions at Every Turn funded the, um, training for teachers this year. Um, we had thirty teachers trained. It cost us twenty-one thousand dollars to train them. So, that was a huge contribution, a donation from Decisions at Every Turn for stepping up and, um, donating that money to the teachers for us to get thirty teachers in both the Warren and the Mendez Training Responsive Classroom. We have a plan in place for next year, but, um, I just want to thank them publicly and let the committee know that, um, they, it was a significant donation.
Awesome, thank you.
Um, with that, we're here to present, um, response intervention. I think before we start, I don't know if Jen, if you've officially been to a school committee meeting.
Just the first.
Just the first introduction. Oh, perfect.
Nice to see you again. Now, now you've been at it for months, right?
So, we've been working on responsive classroom. It's been on the blueprint for, I think, the past two years. We did a lot of work on it last year. I remember when we would do updates, we were supposed to do it in the spring, then I got pushed up to the fall, then we knew Jen was coming up. So, this has been about six, seven months in the making, this presentation. We hope to cover four things tonight. What is RTI? Um, the RTI process in practice for you to get in, in understanding of it. Where we stand with each building in terms of RTI, and then next steps. So, what is response to intervention? I'm gonna start off with a story. Mister, uh, I knew I would get your attention when I said that, Mr. Adams. It was well-placed. Start with a story, just to kinda outline what RTI is, and this is how I explain it to people. Um, at the start of the school year, a second grade student takes a bunch of universal screeners, okay? Um, let's take the reading assessment. Teacher gives a reading assessment to a second grader and notices that they are reading significantly below grade level. If you don't have RTI in place, the reaction is to refer that student for special education services. But what should be happening with RTI is that the classroom teacher develops research-based interventions to put in place to help that child get to grade level. They spend six to eight weeks monitoring the progress, and at the end of eight weeks, they make a data-based decision. Is the child making effective progress and working towards grade level? If the answer's yes, you continue with the interventions. If the answer is no, then the teacher needs to reassess and says, can I do anything differently within my classroom? If the answer's yes, they continue doing those interventions. If the answer's no, then you refer them to the RTI team for Tier Two, which Jen will touch upon. So, it's really a designed proactive approach to instruction and intervention. And it's not just about a student's academic needs. It also touches on social and emotional deficiencies that a child may have. It's a flexible process that varies from child to child. So, it's not a cookie cutter program. It's not a one-size-fits-all. And it really is the responsibility of all certified staff, which is why it starts with the classroom teacher at that Tier One. And if progress isn't made, then it goes to other certified staff. And the focus is on instruction first, not putting in interventions, remediations, or specialized programs. It's about instruction first, um, in order to get the student back to grade level or whatever the area is that's identified. And as it says here, at its core, RTI is about coming together to help all students succeed. That's basically your thirty-thousand-foot view of what is RTI.
Okay, so just to, um, go a little bit more into detail on RTI, um, what it looks like in practice. So, as Paul said, all students are screened, and this does look very different at the high school level versus elementary level because we don't have universal screeners at the high school level. Most high schools d- do not. So, in terms of academics, we don't have a reading specialist, interventionist, or math intervention person at, at our high schools. Um, so, the universal screeners are more at our elementary, um, levels. So, all students, um, receive the Tier One, um, and they're universally screened. Um, and as Paul said, then teachers will, um, use their research-based strategies. Um, and then if this child, after six to eight weeks, is still struggling and not, um, making progress, that's when you would have your response to intervention team meeting. Um, you would come together, uh, you would have, um, all the sort of specialists in the area of need. So, let's say it was a, um, the child was below in reading, and that was the main concern. You would have your reading specialist there. Um, and you would have your, your regular education teacher, um, and any, you may have, there's so much social, emotional concerns. You may have your counselor there. Um, and so at that point, you would look at, um, in addition to giving them Tier One, because you, you're never gonna stop giving them that, that Tier One, um, instruction. So, in addition to that, you're going to look at, okay, um, what interventions can we put in place? At this point, they may be pulled aside in the classroom in a small group outside of the classroom to receive some specific instruction that's gonna focus on the gaps that they're having. Um, it's important to note that they're going to receive that instruction at where, where they are, not necessarily at their grade level. Um, whereas in the classroom, you're gonna be receiving that grade level instruction. Um, so then your data is collected, um, for anywhere from four to nine weeks, um, and then you'll come back. You'll look at that data, and that would be used to inform your instruction. Is that, at that point, is your student making progress? They're, they're proceeding towards grade level? You can look to see, oh, we're gonna continue them with this, with this for another six weeks? Nope, they're ready to go back and just receive Tier One in the classroom? Or, wow, they're really not making progress, and we need to look at some different interventions. At that point, you may look towards special education testing or, or other interventions to put in place.
So, RTI by building. Um, last year, we did a lot of work. Uh, we spent the beginning half of the year putting and revising our B cap and D cap. B cap is a building curriculum accommodation plan, and D cap is the district curriculum accommodation plan. It's basically a twenty-page document filled with best practices. Um, we looked at our old, um, programs. We pulled some in from outside resources, and we had teachers look at it. So, it's a resource for teachers to be able to go to look at if they're looking for those Tier One strategies to implement inside the classroom. We had four district-wide meetings with all the assistant principals in the district to look at what the process is like in each of the buildings. And probably the biggest stumbling block that we came upon, and the big aha that we came out of, was the importance of having data. Because a lot of teachers were referring to kids to Tier One, Tier Two, to the RTI process, without ever having the data at Tier One for what they did to show that it works. So, we spent a lot of time working with the assistant principals to put together a, a process in each of the four buildings. Um, we created an RTI flow chart. It looks a little bit different at the Warren, the Mendez, the middle, and the high school. We have now a flow chart of what happens at Tier One, what happens at Tier Two, what happens at Tier Three, what groups are involved. So, there's a flow chart for each of the buildings to follow, so they know exactly what to do each step of the way. And as far as the building status, they're really are all at different places. As Jen said, it looks a little bit different at the high school than it does i- at the Warren. The Warren's probably an exemplar for districts to use. Um, I know, we've both been to them. It really is a well-oiled machine of how they, they do it. Um, and for other districts who wanna see a beautifully-run Tier Two RTI meeting, go see the Warren School. It's, it's, they, they've done an excellent job doing that. The Mendez has built off of what they've done and incorporated a lot of the, um, strategies and practices at the Warren. They have a great program in place. Um, the middle school's a little bit more fluid, but they hit all the checkpoints by going to the department and grade level meetings, and then having an RTI meeting, um, each month. The high school's still trying to iron out their process, as Jen said. It's a little tricky because you don't have the universal screener. It's also a little trickier when you have a senior at risk identified, and you're in that limbo where if I wait six, four to six, four to eight weeks, they may not graduate. So, I wanna jump to Tier Two now to help this kid graduate. And we're saying, well, let's collect a little bit of data, so it's that, it's that push-pull with, with the process. So, we're still refining our process at the high school, which Jen will speak to.
Okay, so, um, next steps, um, Paul and I talked about that we're gonna continue to follow up with the RTI teams at every building to make sure that their process is working and to be there to support them if they need, um, any, any help with that. Um, particularly, um, we're going to work with the Ashland High School team um, to really develop some measurable interventions. Um, right now, they have, um, they have really streamlined their process. So, I, I spoke with the deans who, who run, um, RTI, and they said that last year, they really didn't have a, uh, so they really didn't have the flow chart. They really didn't have a, a, a process that made sense. Um, and they said that they're really excited that this year, they've really streamlined it. They feel like everyone that is on the team is on board, and they're coming, and they're providing data. Um, and, um, they've made a lot of progress. The area that they, um, would like assistance in is developing some more Tier Two interventions, which makes sense at the high school level that that would, there wouldn't be as many. So, right now, um, they have, you know, extra help, if you're talking about the academic side, you know, extra help that you can support, you can go to your teachers to get. Um, they have their academic foundations, which is their very structured study hall, which is kind of their premier, um, Tier Two intervention, and it really would be great for every kid to have. Um, but, to be a true Tier Two intervention, we really want it for those kids who are, are struggling and really need that. Um, I met with, um, Mr. McKeon, um, to talk to him about that a little bit, and I could see why the kids really wanna be in there because he's a really warm, caring person. Um, and, uh, he, um, really provides, I think a lot of students who are in there um, not only need the sort of academic organizational help, but they really need that sort of social, emotional support as well. And he certainly, just in the thirty minutes I spent with him, I could see that, um, he provided that for those kids. But what we wanna do is really make sure that there's a entrance and exit criteria for that classroom so that, that's just not, you know, you go to the RTI team, and you're like, okay, we're gonna put this child in academic foundations, and they're gonna just stay there. So, uh, Mr. McKeon and I talked about developing some exit criteria, um, maybe even sort of fading, you know? Alright, we're gonna, they're coming to academic foundations three times a week. They're doing really well in their classes. Let's put them, you know, let's, now let's take it down to two. Um, so, and then developing some additional interventions, um, that could be in place. So, that's what, so I'm gonna be going to some of their meetings, um, starting in January, and we're gonna see if we can develop some, um, criteria and some more interventions for Tier Two.
Questions on RTI?
I have a question. Um, at the elementary school levels, when would students be having these meetings with their teachers or the RTI? Um, the students who are more affected or need more help, when would those meetings be held?
So, uh, I just wanna make sure I understand your question. The RTI meetings usually don't involve, with the teachers and the team, usually doesn't involve the child. It's usually a strategy planning meeting in which, okay, we did this at Tier One, this didn't work. Let's get the team together. So, at the Warren School, for instance, it's the assistant principal, it's the guidance counselor, it's the, um, speech therapist, it might be OTPT who's involved. The adjustment counselor might be there. So, it's a team of six or seven different adults, and they go through their process to outline some Tier Two interventions. So, the child wouldn't be, um, at that meeting. In terms of when do they receive those services, it depends on, it depends on what it is. So, if it's a reading, if it's reading, they could get pulled out for reading, or sometimes a reading specialist pushed into the classroom. So, it could just be a part of a small group inside the classroom with reading. If it's a math intervention, same thing with Title One. They could get pulled out to go to Title One services during a science or a social studies class, or Ms. Marcus could push in for Title One. So, it depends on what the intervention is.
Thank you.
Beautiful, thank you.
Alright. Transition to presentation two.
And what have you learned so far, Ms. Cutler? In your one and a half times?
And I definitely don't have it all in here. I feel like, even since I put my presentation together, I've learned so much more and made more steps forward, so, um, hopefully I can come back often and update you guys. Um, so, I started on October first, as you know, um, as a Director of Counseling and Social Emotional Learning. And, um, this is a brand-new role for Ashland, a brand-new role for me, transitioning from being a psychologist and adjustment counselor for fifteen years. Um, so I wasn't really sure what to expect when I came in, and I just wanna preface by saying that, um, the first several weeks, I was just going to meetings, going into the buildings, meeting kids, observing teachers in responsive classroom, and just, I was so happy because, um, it was quite a transition for me. Um, but, the thing that I have taken away is that this is really an amazing community. Um, I've worked in one, well, mostly one school district for my entire career. And, um, coming in here, I felt like very warmly embraced, and I, I really feel, um, part of the community. And that was a really nice way to feel, and I knew that if that was how I felt coming in, then this was gonna be a really good place to work and a really good place to develop, um, the SEL for the district. So, I just wanted to preface it with that. Um, so my first slide, I just, um, broke it down by, um, school counseling in Ashland by the numbers. I'm gonna start by talking about school counseling, then go a little bit into SEL. I mean, they're very intertwined, but because, um, I wanted to break them apart a little bit, um, to talk about that. So, this is really exciting to me, as a long-term school counselor. Um, our American School Counselor Association has a recommendation, it is not mandated in any state, um, that you will have one school counselor for every two-hundred-and-fifty students. Um, most, well, I'll give you the data. So, the two, the, the last data that is published so far is from two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. Um, and this, the national data, the average, there's one school counselor for every four-hundred-and-eighty-two students. That's a pretty staggering number. The two thousand fourteen to the two thousand fifteen Massachusetts data was that there was one school counselor for every four-hundred-and-twenty-three students. So, I, and I've been in positions where I've had two-hundred-plus students, and I've been in positions where I had five hundred. So, um, it, you can be much more effective in your role when you are closer to the recommended ratio. So, I thought it was, at these numbers, these enrollment numbers, um, for each school, actually, I think they're a little bit different now. I got them about three weeks ago. Um, and now when I look at the attendance, I'm like, oh, we have some kids who have moved out. We have some kids who have moved in. But, um, so, at the Warren, there, um, when I got the data, there were six-hundred-and-fifty-nine students, two full-time and one part-time, um, guidance counselors. The part-time is a three-day position. Um, Mendez, very similar, six-hundred-and-twenty-nine students, two full-time, one part-time. Um, at the middle school, six-hundred-and-sixteen students, three full-time guidance counselors, one full-time adjustment counselor. And at the high school, eight-hundred-and-thirty-one students, four full-time guidance counselors, one full-time adjustment counselor. Um, so we're meeting or exceeding the ratio, which I think is extremely commendable. I think it's really exciting. I think it shows that, um, Ashland Public Schools is really invested in, um, meeting the social, emotional needs of our kids. Um, a lot of districts do not have this representation, so I find it very exciting to come into a position where I have all these amazing people to work with and, um, meet the needs of our kids. So, I really wanted to start with that because I just thought that was, um, really exciting. Okay, so, now, um, Paul and I were talking about the tiers. So, um, I like looking at, um, services in terms of tiers. Um, so Tier One, again, is that universal, what every kid receives. So, um, our tier, the, what I'm showing you right now is what the School Counselor Service Delivery currently looks like in Ashland. Um, so the Tier One, um, in every school in Ashland, all students receive lessons from their school counselors. So, at the K to five level, um, all students receive ten, currently ten, lessons, um, in their classrooms from a counselor. Um, their lessons are... Their lessons are, I'm gonna say loosely based on a very old edition of Second Step, which is a social emotional curriculum. So when I came in, I I talked to all my counselors about, um you know, what are you using for your curriculum? Um you know, what, what competencies are you um teaching, you know, what areas? And they were like, they all told me um all, all the way up through middle school that they have an older edition of Second Step. Students do not respond to it. It has these very uh black and white pictures, you hold them up and you, and you, there's a script on the back. It was really written for, for teachers to deliver, um uh not counselors. So um they, they said, well, we are basing our lessons on the topics that are in Second Step, but we're creating our own lessons. Um and that was a a consistent answer that I got. So, so right now, I'll just tell you, I've, I've observed all of the counselors in the district. And some of the topics that I've seen at the K to five schools are um being inclusive to others, making friends, self-regulation, and working as a team. And, okay, at the middle, I'm gonna switch a little bit, the middle school level, the counselors are getting in about three to four times a year um to the classrooms. So definitely a significant decrease in that, that tier one um to students. It's a very different model, as you know, at the middle school level. I worked at the elementary level um for my whole career. And it is a lot more flexible in terms of of getting in than it is at the middle and high school level. But I do think that we can improve in that and I would really like to, us to improve in that area. So I just watched um the middle school counselors last week and this week. And they were doing um some really great lessons on social media, um safety awareness and um cyberbullying prevention. Um and it was really great to see that. They um worked really hard to find lessons that would be relevant. Especially, um you know, at the eighth grade, uh the students have already sort of um had lessons on cyberbullying and social media safety for two years. So the eighth-grade counselor was working very hard to find something that would be relevant to them, that they would, that they would buy into and find to be interesting. So it was really neat to see that. Um I've also observed all the high school counselors um in their seminars. So the, the counselors at the high school level meet with their freshmen and sophomores during their wellness class five times a year. So their topics, they have a very, um, the high school was the one school that had a cor- written curriculum that they provided to me, so I could see exactly what areas they were covering. And um so they, their um freshman and sophomore topics look at career and college exploration, study skills, stress management, and mental health awareness. And the adjustment counselor delivers a lesson on. It's on my screen. The adjustment counselor delivers the um stress management and mental health awareness um lesson. Uh in junior year, um the school counselors meet with their specific students. Oh, let me just back up a second. For the um junior, sophomore and juniors, or freshman and sophomores, the counselors meet with the entire wellness class, so it's not only their specific students. Because they have students from each grade level. So um when they meet, when junior and senior year, they meet with their specific students in much smaller seminar sessions. And those are the ones that I observed. So they had like eight or ten kids, some of their seminars, depending on scheduling, where they had like two or three kids. So that is a much more tailored experience where they're really using um their Naviance uh software to go in and um take career inventories, um look at their PSAT scores, look at colleges and in different careers that um might be of interest to them. So that is what they're doing. So junior year is really focused on post-secondary planning. And I, it was nice for me to see that um they, each counselor has a very different style. But they were using the same, um they were teaching the same things. And um they really did take the time to go through um not just college being the only option. They really um, you know, looked into lots of different areas, which I thought was, was nice to see. And um and then the senior year is really mostly individual and small group conferences. And it, and the counselors did say that is, that is pretty much ninety-nine percent focused on college and applying and getting into colleges. Okay, so I'm gonna, oh, actually, I'm just gonna say, um, school-wide events are another tier-one um intervention that our counselors are involved in. So this could be um Unity Day at the Warren, where it's a bully, bully prevention day. Red Ribbon Week at the middle school, where it's drug prevention. And then Start With Hello at the high school, which is a Sandy Hook Promise program, where you're trying to be inclusive um and, and make friends out of your comfort zone. So those are all tier-one interventions that our counselors, um whether they're certified as guidance or certified as adjustment, are involved in. So then we go to our tier one, which, uh sorry, to our tier two, which is our more targeted interventions that not every student is getting, but students who are showing that need above and beyond, they're receiving the tier one. But they're, they have other behavioral or social emotional needs that aren't being met. So um this is where you would have, you might have some school-based individual counseling, um uh small groups. The Warren and MINDAS do, um oh, they have um groups for students whose families are going through divorce. They have groups for kids who are very anxious. They have groups for um specifically learning self-regulation skills and friendship groups and things like that. And then you might get into your more individual, your crisis response, where, you know, if you have a student who is dysregulated significantly and they're not able to um calm themselves in the classroom, your counselors are going to get called and respond to that. Your consultation, collaboration with teachers, families, community providers. Your response, all the counselors are involved and on the response intervention teams. All the couns, all the guidance counselors are are five of four coordinators. So students who um need specific accommodations during, due to a disability, the school counselors uh run those meetings, uh write the plans, and then monitor to make sure that all the accommodations are in place. Um and then um as part of our positive behavioral intervention supports, we have um check-in, check-out, Chico, I think is how they say it here. And uh, and that's where a student needs um uh more individual attention. They may have a behavior plan where they meet with a mentor in the morning and a mentor in the afternoon. So that's another tier two and our counselors set that up and monitor it. And then our tier three is our, is our very intensive students, three to five percent, that really need um significant outside support. So our counselors are um in charge of referring to the outside providers. A lot of time is spent um communicating with outside providers to make sure that we are carrying out in school what the student needs. And then that the outside provider knows how, um you know, what level of support we're giving and um how the student is doing in the school setting. Consultation and collaboration with families and providers. This is usually significantly more than in tier two. So for example, in tier two, you may um be reaching out to parents every two to three weeks or as needed. In tier three, you may very be likely talking to the parents um of a student on a weekly or maybe two to three times a week basis. Um and then our counselors are all um part of the special education teams. So uh for students, our guidance counselors um complete educational assessments for um, for all students. They attend the, the meetings, whether or not it's a student that they work with. And uh then they're able to provide um non-IEP counseling services based on the need that, that is in the meeting, that they find out in the meeting. Do you have any questions on this before I move to my next slide? I know there's a lot of information. Okay, so um the Massachusetts Comprehensive School Counseling Program is uh modeled after the American School Counselor Association's model. And it is supported um uh by the Department of Education, Secondary, of Elementary and Secondary Education, and by the Massachusetts School Counselor Association. So it's not, again, it, this is not mandated for school counseling programs to, to use this approach, um but it is highly recommended. And um I think that, in my opinion, this is what is going to help unify and make our school counseling program in Ashland be at top-notch, be, be where I think that we need to go. So Massachusetts School Counsel, this is a mission statement of um the Comprehensive School Counseling Program. Massachusetts School Counselors will use district and school data to develop and deliver school counseling programs that are customized to, that's customized to their district's needs, with the ultimate goal of having all students be career um and college-ready. And then the three specific areas um are that you are supposed to be um touching upon and teaching to your students are academic and technical achievement, workplace readiness, career planning, and personal and social development. So there, I'm actually gonna go to the next slide. So are we addressing all three domains in Ashland? The high school um did base their guidance seminars on the Mass Model one point O. Now we have two point O. And um so they are really the school that I have seen is hitting all three um domains and um, and doing it quite well. Corey McGann is now the guidance liaison for the high school. And um he um is in the process of revising their curriculum to make sure that they're really reaching all areas. I think that he and I talked about um incorporating more in the sort of personal, social area. They really do a great job with the college. And uh I think they do a really good job with the academic piece. And I wanna make sure that personal, social piece is also um really um a little more than one focus of one lesson. So um they are starting this year and they're revising their freshman curriculum. And then each year, they're going to revise the next year's curriculum, um which I think is a really great, great goal. And I was excited to see them heading in that direction. The middle school um has classroom, classroom lessons, I'd like to see that increase. And other school-wide activities that do include all elements of, of the three domains. I think that we need, I think we need more. So this kind of goes a little bit into the social emotional learning curriculum. But uh, uh Mr. D Geralamo um and I met early on. Did I say it wrong? And um so, so he and I met early on and he said, I really want um to get something in soon to meet the needs of our middle schoolers. And I really agree, I feel that middle school is um such a vulnerable age and we really need, I think we, I think we almost need the most support there. So um, so we, I met with the counselors. They um were really, they wanted some, something that would um really s- speak to the kids in the language that they, that they get. So they were asking for something with more technology involved in it, um where kids could maybe watch video clips or have something that would be meaningful to them. So we looked at a couple of different curriculums. And I was actually, I'll be honest, I was a little hesitant to look at the Second Step curriculum because I'm not a huge fan of it. But they just revised last year, um actually, they completely threw out the old middle school edition and, and made a completely new curriculum, which is actually really amazing after I started looking at it. So then um Mr. D and um the counselors and I, I don't wanna try again, looked at it together. And we are, um Second Step offers a free two-week trial and you have access to every single part of it. And so we're going to um pilot it in February. And we, we just wanna see, is this something that um our kids are interested in? It will be done in the classrooms co-taught by the counseling staff. That's our, sort of our thought right now. And I like that model because I really think that um in order for um social emotional learning to be effective, it needs to be integrated at all levels. So I think that if we're having our teachers co-teach it with our counselors, it's a lot more likely that they're going to be continuing those areas um throughout the day. So we're gonna, we're gonna look at that, we're gonna see what it looks like, we're gonna, um, I'm gonna go in when they're doing it and co-teach as well. I wanna interview the kids and find out what did they think about it. There's a really nice parent component to it, which is a website and it has lots of um video clips that uh we think that would um be helpful for parents. So there's a lot of areas and there's a lot of the professional development that's embedded in it for teachers as well. So that's something that we are going to look at and see if that might meet some of our needs at the middle school. Um at the elementary schools, um I have found that the classroom lessons really are focusing on the personal, social area and a little bit in the sort of the academic um skills area. But there's nothing in the workplace um career area at all. So uh we are working to um, to look at this model and really um develop lessons for every single area and to also hit all the um Castle's five SEL competencies as well. So we are looking to expand in that area. So next steps um with the school counseling program, um I'm very excited, I've been waiting to do this. I've met with all the, the groups, um I've met with every counselor individually, I've met with them all in groups by school. But I really feel that in order to strengthen the program, we really need to meet vertically. I think that there's not a lot of communication between buildings, um which is very typical in school districts, um counseling programs. And um so I'm really excited to get them together in the afternoon on January eighteenth on our PD day. And we are gonna really start vertical planning. And I'm excited for the counselors to learn from each other, because I think that's really important. The second thing is um what I touched on before, I'm gonna be working with the K to five counselors to really further develop their standards-based tier-one counseling curriculum. As I said, they, they have lessons, some of them are really awesome. But um they're, they might pick a book and go in and do a friendship lesson, but there's really not, they're not really following a specific um sort of avenue that makes sense to me. So we're, so we're looking at that and they're really excited to do that. So I'm excited that they are very on board with that. And um this last area, I know, is something that Jim has, is very, has specific interest in. And I think it's gonna take um some time, um like several, several years. But um we really wanna expand tier one um back in the slide with the um, let me just go back to this. If you look at the tier one, um there's no individual there. Um there's no individual student planning. And there, there really should be, that is part of the um, the national model, the Massachusetts model. And I think that is something that is gonna take a lot of planning and it's definitely going to be a change, um which is always difficult. But I think it will um really be something that's going to be so helpful for our students in um knowing that they are meeting with their counselors, the counselors know who they are, they know someone that they can go to if they have a problem. And they're really starting at, I, I would really like to start in preschool. They're really starting to develop a personal sort of strengths plan in the beginning of their educational career. Um I've done a lot of research um on um what's, you know, is it important to, to start, you know, looking at strengths and, and careers when you're, you know, three or four or five years old? And everything says yes, because if, I just read an article this afternoon that talked about, if you don't, um if you don't have experience and, and have, if you haven't been exposed to STEM careers, by the time you're ten, you're, you're extremely unlikely to explore that after that. So I think, why not expose our kids to all these amazing careers at a really young age so that they can start developing that? We can't wait until they're in middle school and high school for that. I think that a lot of the research also shows that kids um tend to go into careers that they're exposed to. So we need to think about equity. And, you know, y- some kids may be exposed to a variety of careers at home. And some kids may not be exposed to many things, um many careers at home. So in my opinion, we need to provide that um so that every, every student is getting exposed to a variety of careers. Um and every student um has a better chance to reach. and every student has a better chance to reach, reach high. So that is an area that I will be, I've already met with the middle school counselors and principal about that because they have individual student success plans. They're specifically for students who are struggling on their MCAS scores. But that was really sort of the first step, but Jim told me, okay, talk to them to figure out what they're doing and then we'll work to expand it. So that's an area that I really would like to start at the young, you know, K and preschool level and then work on building it up because I think it is very important. Do you want me to go on? Or do you have any questions about the school counseling piece? Okay, so this is a lot shorter.
Well, I'm sitting here thinking, I'm so happy we have you. This is awesome.
So great to have you. Oh, that makes me feel, thank you. Okay, so now specifically just looking at the, of social emotional learning, there's a lot of crossover obviously with our counseling staff. Tier-one, we have our PBIS Positive Behavioral Intervention Supports pre-K to twelve and we have our Responsive Classroom K to five. Paul and I are working to help teachers in schools right now integrate the two because PBIS has been a system that's been in place for ten years in Ashland, eight to ten years.
The tenth year at the high school.
Yep, and, and we have Responsive Classroom K to five, but we have a lot of teachers who have very strong buy-in to PBIS. And we really, I, I think that we can really make them work together. But I think it just takes some planning and some time. So we're working on that right now. And it's been amazing to see Responsive Classroom i- in place, K to five. And I know that the teachers who were trained really love it. The teachers who weren't trained are enjoying it as well. I think once they're trained, it will be even better. And I've heard a lot of parent, really positive parent response to it as well. I think that when your, when your goal is to create a positive community within your classroom, you're, you're focusing on building that relationship with kids and building that relationship between each other. And I think that that's what we need to do in schools now because so much of our society is spent on screens and not having that personal interaction. We really do need to build it into our school day. A lot of times in my career I've heard, well, you know, that's the parent's job to do that at home. I completely disagree because we have a responsibility as educators to educate the whole child. And if that's what we need right now, then I think that's really appropriate. And it's really nice to see it in the K to five school. So I've, I've, it's been very, I felt very lucky to come in and have that already in place because it is very expensive to train teachers in responsive classroom. And a lot of schools love that model but can't afford it. So it's been, it's been really nice to see that. Then we have our K, our, our classroom lessons by the counselors. That's another tier-one. Our school-wide events and then the See Something, Say Something reporting system that was just implemented, I believe in October. And, and that is a tier-one because every student has access to reporting on, on that, on the app. I went to the presentations at the middle school and I usually have my door open in my office and all the lockers are right, a section of the middle school lockers are right in front of it. And it was really fun to hear the responses. And, you know, some of the kids, you know, were like, oh, I'm gonna report you right now on the, on the app. I'm gonna, you know. And then as sort of the weeks have gone by, you actually hear like honest conversations between kids. Like I, you know, I think, I think you should tell that on the app, you know. So it's very interesting and we have had a lot of kids reporting on the app from, you know, very sort of this person is bothering me, bullying type things to more serious things. And I think it's, I think it's really great for kids to know that they can anonymously report this. When I was watching the middle school counselors do their lessons, they talked about that. They also said, you can come to us anytime. But I think that if you don't already have a personal relationship with your counselor, you, that might be very difficult for you to do. So part of that is I think that once we are, the counselors are able to develop those relationships with each kid, they might be more likely to go to them, but I think it's really great that we have this in place. So, so those are sort of our tier-one social emotional learning, things that we already have in place in Ashland. Our tier-two, again, our Response to Intervention, our Cheko, check-in, check-out, targeted small group lessons and individual check-ins or short-term individual counseling. And then our tier-three is our more intensive individual student planning wraparound, community therapeutic services and then our special education. And then I have our Castle Five Competencies. Actually, sorry, let me just go to our next slide. So sort of my plan for social emotional learning right now, and the first two I've already completed and I was excited to complete something, so I put them in blue. So the review of the current SEL practices is what I've been doing this whole time, going to all the schools and seeing what's in place and talking to all the principals and all the counselors. And then selecting the SEL framework for the district, this was kind of already done because you had already chosen the Castle Five Competencies. It was in the blueprint. But Massachusetts, Desi has also indicated that that is the framework that they would like schools to use. And it's also the framework that I was most familiar with. I've learned many frameworks since then, since I've been doing a lot of research. But it was, it's really the one to me that makes the most sense for the school setting, for our kids. So I have really been using the Castle sort of district framework plans that they have in place for schools to sort of go through and, and roll this out. So number three is create and continuously update a district SEL strategic plan. So that's something that I have started by myself based on what, what I have observed and what's in place. And then the next one, form a steering committee. I think this is extremely important because I don't want to be an audience of one deciding everything for the, for the community. So I think that, you know, to inform the strategic plan, I, in January, I'm planning to form a steering committee with parent representation, community representation, student representation, faculty, teachers, counselors. I, I just, and it, I'm not quite sure what that's gonna look like. I have a lot of ideas right now. But I want to make sure that everyone is included. I've thought a lot about, okay, how do I reach out to parents, all parents that want to have a voice but may not be able to come to a night meeting? So I think there's a lot of different, I have, I have a whiteboard in my office and I kind of write down every time I have an idea. So I have a, a, a big list of that and I've already met with some parents who are really interested in, in participating. So, so that's really something that in January I'm really gonna focus on and I think that is really gonna help inform how, how we proceed. And part of what I would like the steering committee to, to help me with is creating a social emotional learning communication plan. And basically that's detailing, who do we need to be communicating with about what we're doing? I think that one of the biggest things that I have found in working here is that every group that I meet with tells me they don't know what's going on in the other areas. So parents are like, I don't know what the school counselors do. I don't know what social emotional learning is and I don't know what, you know. And then I have teachers who say, well, I don't know, yeah, we have to do SEL. What, what does that mean? And then community members and community groups and, so I think that that communication piece is so important. And so that's, and I really want to involve a lot of people in helping develop that. I think that will really help with buy-in as well. And then professional development. I wrote, begin planning in February two thousand nineteen. I've already started planning it. And I, and I'm already starting with certain pieces of that right now anyway. I'm going into Warren in, starting the second week in January. I'm really excited because I'm gonna go into classrooms and do a lesson on growth mindset. And I just, I, I think that modeling the social emotional learning in the classroom for the teachers is really important. And I was excited to see, I, I sent them my schedule. I said it is not mandatory, but if you'd like to sign up. And within two hours, I had eighteen teachers already signed up and I was very excited about that. So, and I, I will, I always say, I greatly miss working directly with the kids. So I am so excited. I have some days where I'm literally from eight to three in classrooms. That's really exciting for me. So I can't wait to do that. So, so those are kind of the, that's my plan for the moment. And I think it will be evolving and, and ever-changing, but this is kind of where I am right now. Any questions?
Excellent. That was very thorough. And you're off to an unbelievable start.
Thank you.
And like Kathy said, we're so happy to have you.
Thank you so much.
We have this one person in charge of all of this stuff.
Well, and I like one of the things you said when you were talking about the community. Because I've, I've attended several SEL things that either Karen's hosted or different things or SEL four MA and, and that group. And one of the things that for me is, you know, we, we have now a resource in schools and we also have a resource, you know, with the, with the town. And trying to not have at the, the programming be a school-only thing, but, but a whole community that is all speaking in, in the same language because it's, it, how, how do you get those teachers involved? How do you get everybody that the, the child's gonna interact with in the community understanding the needs and, and, and speaking that? So I like what you said. I hope, you know, you're obviously only a couple of months into it, but hopefully we can, we can start to have a more comprehensive holistic view as a community of, of these things. And certainly we have, might have different needs in, you know, the, the elementary than they do at the, at the community center with the senior center. But, you know, there, there's probably more overlaps than, than there are distinctions, so.
Yes, absolutely. And I, I have to say, I've, I met with the YMCA. I've met with Jennifer Wolfing. I've met with the Ashland, I can't think of the name of it right now, the, the public schools after, after-school programs.
Senate Day Program.
Yep, and we talked about making sure that what we put in place, we also, I talked to them about, I would love to provide, I would love for you guys to come and join in our, the PD that I'm providing so that we're speaking the same language and when you have our kids, you know what we're teaching them. And they were so excited about that and which made me excited. So I think that, that really is the plan for me. I really think that you need to look at, in the big picture and, and then kind of extrapolate and make it, you make those actionable steps from there. But that is really important to me.
How do you sort of incorporate a lot of things or is there a place for the social emotional learning into either extracurricular activities, whether it's athletics or other clubs? Do we start to integrate some of these approaches into that and what's your plan there?
I don't have a plan there yet, I'll be honest. But it's certainly, yes, I, I think that, I think that there is definitely a place for that. I know that I was heavily involved in, in PBIS in my former district and we did reach out to all of our extracurriculars, our, our sports teams. And we made sure, you know, our coaches were on board with what, what we were teaching our kids and how we were reinforcing them. And so I think that works extremely well when you do it that way. And I, and I think that is definitely an important piece to include.
I'd certainly say, you know, one of the real nice things is, is going into the schools and having teachers come up to myself and Paul quite often talk about how Jen's just been available to them to, to work through strategies, to develop skills, to, to have her, you know, be a sounding board. Someone outside of, of a specific building. We use Warren as an example. Where the counseling staff or teachers will, will say, help me with some strategies. So what can we do differently or what are some things that you've seen that, or you can help us become better at what we do? That's really, I, I think, one of the coolest things about the position is that her experience is able to, to, to move into our buildings and help our staff. They've been craving it for a long time. I think they would tell you that counselors are unto an island themselves, right? They're quite often and they're forgotten about in the professional development and it's, it hasn't been targeted. And this is our opportunity to, to really move our district forward. And I couldn't agree more. The, the committee itself is invested in the counseling staff that we have at every building. Do we need to increase those point-sixes to full-time? We do eventually. We do. We need to get it so it's one full-time. And we have, we've been talking about the model and what that model looks like, especially K through five. Is it really guidance? We're moving away from that term guidance, right? It's counseling. And the, the skill set that is needed should be developed because our, our, the needs of our children are changing, especially K through, pre-K through five, really. So our counselors need to be adjustment counselors. They need to be, you know, psychologists. That's the skill set that we need to develop over the next three to five years. So I, I do believe our counseling will look different in three to five years and really excited for it.
I'd just say, we've talked about this a lot and I think there's been, we've talked for the last few years about social emotional learning. When Paul came on, I felt like we had a resource to start, you know, developing some PD in that area and made progress. But this feels like you have a big picture plan now and that's, that's really exciting. So I'm glad to have you.
Thank you so much.
I can definitely talk to the students' point of view. We have been craving this for, forever. We actually did a activity before school started with a bunch of the leaders of the school. So all the presidents and vice presidents of all the clubs, class officers, all those type of people. And we went around on boards and put sticky notes up. And one of the questions was, what do you want teachers to know about you? Of course, you have the less homework. We have a life outside of school. But a lot of them were, were struggling mentally sometimes and it's hard for us to connect and relate that to teachers and they don't necessarily see that if you don't have that bond with the teacher. So with social emotional learning, having that already instilled instead of having to tell a teacher necessarily that you are struggling is fantastic. So, thank you.
That's amazing to hear. I'm just so excited to hear that. And yeah, so that's, that's really exciting. And I think that we're doing this for our students, so we can't forget the student voice. You know, that, that is so important. I've been really impressed with all of the, you know, the students who were talking earlier. You know, what everyone is doing in terms of, of what you guys are doing. It's amazing to me. And I definitely, you know, want to involve students as much as they want to be involved because this is for you guys. Thank you for saying that.
Thanks, Jen.
All right.
Presentation three?
Make it quick, Dr. Viera.
No pressure though.
No, none whatsoever.
Thanks, Jen.
No, you should not. You should go home.
Thank you, Jen.
I'll see you.
Watch it live on Facebook on the ride home.
She doesn't care about accountability.
How many slides was this one, Mr. Viera?
We'll see.
Just got shorter.
Okay, I'll say which one. He sent out four, four presentations for this part of it, so hopefully he's only gonna go through one page or that's there.
Thank you. So I've been charged with nearly an impossible task, which is to take a very complex and new system and give a thirty-thousand-foot view of it in an engaging and interesting way. So what follows is my best attempt to meet that.
I think you need that song and dance.
What about the candy?
So what follows is, is my attempt at that. So understanding the new accountability system, this came out this year and, and it is brand new. District leaders and building leaders across the Commonwealth spent a good portion of August, September and October trying to understand this very complex system. I think we have a good handle on it now and we understand it. There are still so many intricacies of it that as time goes on, we'll be able to dive a little bit deeper into. And what you have in front of you is a copy of the district, of, of the report card that schools get. There's a district-wide report card and then there is a building report card by school. What I chose to highlight today is the high school progress report because it touches on all the various components of the new accountability system. So there are five indicators in this system. First one being achievement and under achievement, we have English, Language Arts, Math and Science. It's how our kids do it on the MCAS exam. The next piece of the accountability system is growth. And under growth, you have both ELA and math. You want kids to be at fifty percent growth. That's the target number to hit. If you hit fifty percent growth, it means you made a year's worth of growth in a year. Anything less than that, you didn't. Anything more than that, you exceeded. High school completion is the third indicator and obviously this is just specific to the high school. And there are three areas. The four-year cohort graduation rate is how many kids graduated. And there are three areas. The four-year cohort graduation rate is how many kids graduated in four years of high school. The extended graduation rate is what percentage of kids who didn't graduate came back in year four and a half, five or six and earned a diploma. And then finally, your annual dropout rate. Um, the fifth indicator is progress towards attaining English proficiency. And we're looking for how many kids tested out of ELL services. If you notice at the high school, it's blank, because you need at least twenty kids in a subgroup in order to have it, um, count. So at the high school, we don't have twenty ELL students in just grade ten who were tested. But if you go to the Warren or the Mendez, because, I'm sorry, the Mendez or the middle, because they're testing all six hundred kids, you do have twenty, um, students there. And then additional indicators has been, um, a very interesting conversation with, um, my admin friends. Chronic absenteeism is defined as a student who's missed more than ten percent of the school year. They prorate if a student's new to a district, so a hundred days, ten, ten days, a hundred eighty days is eighteen days. But the state doesn't differentiate between excused and unexcused absences. So you could have a kid who's hospitalized for thirty days, you know about it, it's an excused absence. You're providing services to the child in the hospital, but because they're not physically in the building and they're not marked present, it counts against you. Um, and then the other one is advanced completion of coursework. What they're looking for is what percentage of juniors and seniors took and passed an AP course or an international barter laureate, which we don't offer, an AP course or a high-level math and/or science course. So that's what that means. And we'll dive into that a little bit deeper in a few minutes. Yes, sir?
Paul, go back to the chronic absenteeism, because I think what's critical, even though we're looking at the high school,
Yeah.
is that we have a lot of, um, concerns, obviously at the Mendez and, and the middle school because of the chronic absenteeism. And it's not, it, it's cultural, right? So we have families who go, uh, to India. Uh, and they'll be gone for ten, twelve, fourteen days. Uh, be, and that, uh, impacts the overall accountability. Uh, i- it's just, and we have numerous families that, or, or Brazil, or various places that, that go at, at the elementary levels and take their kids out, so, you know.
Kelly Ford.
It's always a challenge.
Yeah, Kelly Ford did an interesting article to me. There's a grass movement starting with the MSAA, the Principals Association, to try to get the Department of Education to redefine what's considered an excused and unexcused absence. And it's sad that, for instance, we might have a student who's medically hospitalized. We're providing services under our curriculum and under our teachers to that child, but yet they count against us in the accountability stand. So that's when we said, there's a lot of intricacies.
That must be happening everywhere.
Everywhere.
It is.
Everywhere. People are, yeah.
So as long as everybody's getting knocked down, it's probably not.
I know, but it doesn't really make any sense.
It, it does impact, though.
It doesn't impact.
Well, can I ask you one question?
Absolutely.
Just generally, when you look at this kind of report, um, and I know this may be changing with the, sort of with the MCAS two point O, but additional testing, but is this a report that, um, accounts for all tests administered at the high school? Or is it sort of a single class year? Is it the cohort?
So for the high school, this is, and if you look at ELA under achievement, that was last year sophomores, how they did.
Okay.
On that E, on that MCAS exam for ELA, for the, was it two thousand seventeen, the two thousand eighteen exam, but the class of two thousand and twenty.
But there will be at some point both tenth and eleventh grade tested, right?
No.
No, just it's always state time?
It, for high school, it is.
There's conversations, but it's not there, no.
That was under Park had proposed that?
Talked about going in further.
Right. Okay.
In addition to, and again, our science is freshman typically. It's freshman, half freshman, half sophomores, because of the biology. It's the only exam we take.
And is, is the advanced coursework completion only math and science?
Only math and science.
Yeah.
Okay, we don't care about ELA?
And, and.
Under A, under AP, under AP exam, under AP and international barter laureate, they do count English, social studies classes. But for advanced coursework in, in math and science is what they're looking for.
Doesn't that refer, r- right, so, does it also take into account the subgroups, Paul? So in, so if you're ELL, low income, is, are the advanced coursework completion?
Well, what you're looking at here is for all students. I didn't break it down, again, it was only.
So you get points for that too, right? The, the, the push is, the more disadvantaged students should be pushed into the higher course. You get more points allocated.
Correct, your percentage goes up.
If I remember, our AP results were.
Number one in the, in the state.
Top of the state, and we're getting zero.
Right.
Correct, because all.
Right.
And, and that was, that was, it took a long time to get an explanation, so Jim Adams takes five AP classes.
Not really.
Takes six advanced math and science classes, gets a hundred and a five on every score. He counts as once, because all you need to do is, we're looking for Jim to take one class and get one passing grade in it. So he counts once, even though he may have taken five APs and six high-level math and science courses.
Accountability, the goal would be to have, if you had two hundred kids in a class, have them all take at least.
Right now, if, if you look at last year's target number, which we'll get into in a few minutes, the target for last year was, um, seventy-one point one percent of all juniors and seniors taking and passing a high-level English and math or AP class.
Seventy-one percent.
Seventy-one percent.
It's not really, it's not really AP if, uh, you have seventy-five percent doing it.
So, the high level could be considered, it might be considered honors, right? It, it doesn't have to be necessarily all.
Well, it's, it's, for instance.
Right, but, but my point is, if, if you have three quarters, if the target is three quarters of your students doing something, how can you consider it advanced at that point, right? You have.
It doesn't need to be at the, so for instance, anatomy and physiology does not count as a science class. But physics does. Or molecular biology counts, correct.
I'm taking both of those. I'd say they're both sciences.
So we have our juniors and seniors taking math and science courses, but if you look at the definition, and Desi created a.
You know, I'm not talking about what is included, I'm just saying that.
It's like, we, we're.
The, the target number seems ridiculous, right?
Don't look at that as R's AP, look at it, the, the course.
We're supposed to have average and then above average, not everybody above average. That's just how realistic.
I think, I think that's what needs clarifying. It's not necessarily, you can have physics CP two. That's, that's a, that's an advanced course.
So molecular biology is one.
It's not necessarily saying you have to be an AP.
Well, no, no, but what, what I'm saying is.
Everyone should be taking physics.
I think Paul's larger point is, if your, your goal is to think about what you're doing to get more kids to take advanced classes, you're basically trying to get everybody to be above average, which is impossible. I'm not saying us, I'm saying the system.
But didn't he just say that, though, some of the classes that count aren't necessarily like the above-average classes?
Well, I mean, it's how you're defining what above average looks like, right? I mean, honors AP versus CP two. I mean, if you're offering a CP two physics class, that's advanced coursework.
That counts.
But, but you're not saying they have to be AP.
Correct.
Right? So, shouldn't, shouldn't be, our goal be to, to get as many kids to be taking?
I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not talking about what we should be, I'm talking about this is, this is.
No, understood.
An accountability thing, right? So, any, if you're talking about advanced coursework completion. So advanced, not, but you're saying three quarters, the target should be three quarters, otherwise you're gonna be telling, that's not advanced. That's saying majority.
Fancy label.
I think it's the term, I think it, the term advanced is, is probably what needs to go away.
Okay.
I mean, because I think we're getting caught up in what advanced means, as opposed to, you know, certain courses and coursework that's identified by the state as saying seventy percent of your students are taking a chemistry class and a, and/or a physics class.
And this is why we spent three months trying to understand the new accountability, because it was discussions like this that we had at roundtables. Um, go and go for it.
You, you keep having trouble figuring it out. And without, the bigger question, I think, for me and for us as a committee is, are, do, are we gonna make decision? Do we make decisions based on how to fit better into this accountability model?
Correct.
That doesn't make a lot of sense to us, or are we gonna continue to make decisions on, you know, what's best for the individual student? As far as what classes they should be taking, you know?
And, and, and also what, what the, what the accountability means for us, so, uh, i- that, that's the balance. Like, how much do we say, okay, our accountability isn't where it needs to be, but do we care?
Right.
Right, um.
If you have a child.
If we're sitting here doing, doing the right, doing the right thing, we believe by, by the students, then, you know, unless there's some other, you know.
There's no financial benefit to.
Right, so.
If you have a child who loves the arts and is into music and is into art, and it comes in junior, senior year, and you know that's a path that they wanna pursue in college, go off to music or the arts. To for, personally, to force that kid not to take an art class, to not to take a music class, to take molecular biology to get us from seventy to seventy point one.
Most absurd thing.
Doesn't make a whole lot of sense.
And, and, and you know, and, and maybe people would feel differently, uh, you know, with a different makeup of a different committee or in a different community, but that's really not how we seem to roll here. You know, I, a- and so spending too much time, I think it's important to understand how it all works, and, and we all should understand it. We should be able to, be able to explain to community members who have questions about it. But I, I, we, we're clear that we're not, you know, seeing something on here and saying, oh, gosh, you know, we need to change the way that we're pushing students towards classes, or.
But there is good data in here that we can use to inform instruction, right?
Fantastic.
And you know how I feel about the art class at the high school? What have I said a million times? If you don't take a class with Scott Smith, you've done a disservice to yourself all through high school. I don't care if you like art or not.
He's a great man.
He's just that great of a teacher.
Or I think, what I, what we've talked about, I think, as a committee, you know, Jim has been a believer in for a long time, is those growth figures.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
To me, that's, like, that's what we ought to be focusing on, is, is where is a kid now? And where is that kid a year from now and the year after that? And every kid's gonna progress differently. And each kid has a different set of strengths and weaknesses that allow them to achieve a different growth rate in ELA than they will in math.
Right.
And so from my perspective, you know, as a, sort of that policy discussion, I think we ought to be focusing on helping kids develop as much as they can across the board. And, you know, until this starts meaning something more than, you know, we're putting a label on you, I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want to get in this situation like Paul described, where you're advocating to a student who will never use physics as an example.
Right.
Take physics, 'cause it's gonna help us look better.
Correct.
Right, absolutely. Yeah, no, I think.
Well, I've made it engaging already.
Yeah.
Excellent.
We should, we should, I, I think we should always be exposing them, like Jen said, to those things, be, you know, uh, I, I've always told my friends who, uh, you know, or their, or their, uh, younger siblings or children, like, don't take calculus without taking physics. Cause, you know, one doesn't, you, you go through calculus, like, why do I care about this? And, and their physics is, you know, exposure.
She told me that about thirty-five years ago.
Exposure, exposure to physics gets you the why, and it ma- matters, but, you know, we should expose them, but, yeah, that, uh.
But even hearing those growth numbers, I think, in perspective, like, I think, you know, to the extent that it, it informs us, you know, maybe as a district where our strengths are, where our weaknesses are, what we need to work on, we should continue doing that. But we're also looking at very small windows of, we're not looking at the whole student. We're looking at a couple of subjects. You know, who's measuring growth of social emotional learning? Who's measuring growth of how good you are at art? Not this.
The, the distaste I have here is the value proposition it's putting on a very small subset. So, only math and sci- hold, hold on a second, why, why is that the only, and all beyond? This, this coming from a very technical person who has degrees in that, but, you know, what, what, why the, you know, the, the, the value that they're placing on.
There's nothing in social studies or civics.
Yeah, who cares about that stuff, right? I mean, that's ridiculous. That, that's what this is saying.
Yeah.
And, and I'm worried, more about that messaging, that if somebody's looking at this and trying to un- understand it, and it's, to me, I, I, it's very misplaced value propositions from my perspective, but.
And I think the one thing that we, we really probably should be mindful of is, you know, look, when people are looking at communities and they wanna move someplace, and they look at, at how schools are rated, this'll be something people look at. You know, I, I know when we moved into town, it was before our kids were born, so we could really go wherever we wanted. One of the things that truly caught our eye at the time was, the district had some rating from Desi of like thirtieth best in the state of high schools. I don't even remember. And, um, you know, and, and it's a number, and it tells almost nothing. But when you have very, very limited ability to get real data or something that's telling, that's what people look at.
Or it's, or before you even have any idea, and that, that number's meaningful to somebody who doesn't know anything else about it. But, you know, I would more like say, you know, you, you guys have influence in the discussion with trying to influence this to be a better.
Right.
Piece of data, right? And, and you can extrapolate it, you can get, you can pull up pieces of data that are meaningful, but, you know, it's more, you know, your influence in the, in the conversations to be able to say, hey, this, let's change this to be more meaningful and more encompassing and more holistic.
And I think we have hope, at least at the superintendent's level, with Commissioner Riley.
Yeah.
To have those discussions, right? I, I think, um.
That's good to hear.
It's really hopeful.
Good.
Yeah, my recollection is that after the conference that we were all at last month, there was a survey that got sent around, and it was circulated through the MISC listserv about accountability standards, if I remember right.
Might have seen something.
I mean, I think, I think I filled out, and what I remember the most from it was the attendance point, uh, the absenteeism. Um, so I don't know whether it was an all-encompassing survey, and I'm just remembering that part of, it was really focused on that, but.
Let's, let's let Dr. Vera continue.
Um, so, there are two groups. Uh, your first group.
Is this only slide one?
Yeah, there's a lot of arrows in your slides, so I think I'm on slide six now. There's all school.
He's counting the different arrows as slot, at different slides, but.
So, there's two groups for each. There's all students, which is easy to explain, it's all students. And then there are your lowest performing students. And the way lowest performing students are defined, regardless if it's in elementary or high school, is they look at the two hundred kids in a class, and it's the bottom twenty-five percent. So, for our purposes, it would be the fifty lowest scores on the MCAS exam. That's how they're defining lowest performing students. Has nothing to do with subgroups, has nothing to do with socioeconomic status, has nothing to do with ELL or special education. It is your twenty-five percent of your lowest performing students. Points, you see, everything has a total of four po- possible points. You can earn five different points. Zero for decline, one for no change, two for improved, three for met target, and four for exceeded target. So you can see, if you look at the lowest performing under achievement, we earned ones across, which means we didn't decline, we didn't improve. We stayed the same from two thousand seventeen to two thousand and eighteen. So that's the point system, how they're giving everyone, um, points. And nearing the end, uh, we have weighted points, percentage of possible points, and criterion reference percentage. So, what they do is, if you look down under achievement, you had four in ELA, three in math, and three in science for a total of ten points, and that's weighted at forty-seven point five percent. Your total possible points is twelve. That's wa- weighted at forty-seven point five percent. So when you go all the way down to the bottom, you see, under possible points earned for all high school students, there's eight, based off of the percentage of the weight for each of the different, um, indicators. Then under total possible points, there was ten point seven, again, weighted. There's a different weight for all students than there is from the lowest performing students. So what the Commonwealth has done for all students, we had seventy-five percent possible points. Lowest performing was thirty-one percent. They take that, divide by two, and that's your percentage of possible points, which is fifty-three, which gave us partially meeting targets. What does that mean? Eighty-five percent of the schools should be in that, according to this chart, partially meeting targets. Uh, in order to move out of partially meeting targets to meeting targets, you need to be at above seventy-five percent, which we were for all students at the high school, but because of the lowest performing group, um, that brought us to a fifty-three. So.
So, Paul, so what happens with that lowest performing student?
Uh huh.
Who, in ELA, if it's the, the bottom twenty-five students, just using rough, that that student had a, you know, met expectations in the MCAS the year before. Let's use two forty as a number.
So we had six students who had less than a two forty last year in English ELA. So, six students had less than a two forty. So when you're looking at that bottom fifty, I think there was a hundred eighty kids, so it might be forty kids. You're looking at thirty-five kids who had above a two forty. You could have had some kids who were in the high proficient, low needs improvement area, and still be in that low performing group, based off of our data, but.
So, so the, the low, how does that, how does lowest performing work? Is, is due, do they identify and then track individual students? Or does it, is it basically your, um, your, your, your floor, for lack of a better term? And whether the whole floor regardless of who's in it at any given point in time goes up.
And that's what they're trying to do, the the terminology they're using, thank you for my lead in, Mr. Kendall, was they're trying to raise the floor. And they're and they're creating the floor by saying.
Right, so but is that a dynamic twenty five, or is it, hey, we you you identify the twenty five percent? And then track those individuals and their progress, or is it, hey, they've moved out, but now your twenty five is different, a different cohort.
Well, that's the issue.
But but has the whole thing moved up.
So if, and now we're talking two different conversations, which makes it even more complex, this is just high school.
Which there's, right.
This is just high school, so they're still taking the legacy MCAS and you're looking at an isolated group. So next year, you're looking at a completely different set of kid, so we could go in and analyze this data and say. Why, why did we score so low with ELA and achievement? And we could say, wow, this is what happened with these five to ten kids, next year it's a whole different five to ten kids. When you go back and you look at middle school scores, they're taking now the MCAS two point O, we only have one year's worth of data on that. So we have one more year of the legacy MCAS, and I think next year with this current freshman class, they'll take. No, they'll no longer take the legacy MC- legacy MCAS for high school, they'll take the MCAS two point O. So you're looking at a bunch of different data points, and for some schools, when you're looking at high school, they did MCAS. Then our kids, then they went to Park, then they went back to MCAS, so it's so hard to track them in a cohort in longitudinally. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, you know, long winded, it's a it's a it's a singular singular point.
At the high school, for sure.
At at the high school. So there's no, there's no tracking of anything at the high school. It's a singular snapshot each year of a different, completely different.
So what used to happen is you'd like be identified, say in the eighth grade, you'd have a cohort around the state, that you were then placed into that cohort. And then your growth was compared to those kids, that's how you determined what your growth was, so. So now it's it's focusing on your own kids and your own school.
Attaching your package, you have a copy of, um, the district wide report card, and I know for another meeting. Jim's asked me to come and dive a little bit deeper into the data, but just to look at too quick.
No, I I what I said was.
What you said was.
Should you have questions about the data, Paul would be happy to.
I was just looking for more time, but um.
If you have questions, he has office hours going.
That's exactly what I said too, but I wanted to give the offer.
But if you look at where we have zeros, under chronic absenteeism, it was zero. Our target was to be at three percent, have less, had three percent kids, less than ten percent absent. Two thousand seventeen, we had four point one percent of our kids absent, two thousand eighteen, we went up to five point one percent. So we got zero points, cause we declined, we went from four point one percent absent to five point one percent.
And I even wonder whether we're, you know, that we're even getting hurt because of the our programming we're putting in district. For for students that, you know, might be more frequently absent, that other districts have outplaced, don't count towards them.
Correct.
You know, but.
And the answer is yes, it has hurt us, and Kelly's looked at that data.
So, so, so keep that as a zero, I I I love the fact that that's a zero, if that's where they're counting it, because. That means we're 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 keep, we're keeping the 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 students in district, which is the right thing to do.
So, I want to get sort of soft block question, what does this do that the other system didn't do? What does it, what does it tell us if anything, or is this just a new way of making things more complicated?
A new way to come up with a meaningless number?
They they added, I mean, the MCAS, the growth of high school completion was all there, it's a different formula, you used to get, you used to get bonus points for. Your your progression, um, they added the ELL as an indicator. Chronic absenteeism was there, but it wasn't as prominently placed, um, the advanced coursework wasn't there, that's been added. Um, they're no longer designating schools as level one or underperforming schools, they're now called. What's the new term, um, focused targeted support of broad comprehension, comprehensive support as opposed to being. Level one school or level five schools, um, I've already forgot which one's which, cause I'm the, I'm deep in this one now. So they just made some, some changes.
Schools of recognition.
And schools of recognition.
And, yeah, so, so what?
Where there's no diversity, no, it's all the same.
What do they do with this accountability system, so each school?
They publish it.
They publish it, it's your report card.
You 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 the Desi your profile and stuff.
You do the same thing with that, as you do with the kids' report card.
Right, so the whole level one, level two, schools like that, doesn't exist.
Right, so, so we think about.
Is that good?
Yeah, it doesn't, yeah.
Is it take the stigma away from, but but they, but you knew which, but you knew which districts were in trouble or needed help, right?
If if you were to look at the data from and use the old accountability system. Ashland High School i- has always been a level one district, right, or a level one school, and it would have been, continued to be a level one school. Under this, we're not, we're partially meeting district, the middle school is a meeting targets. School, right, and then partially meeting at Mendez, so. The the challenge is, we had two level ones before, middle and high, but we were never going to be a level one district, because at this point in time. If one school is a level two, then everything is a level two, right, overall comprehensively, so. I don't think it changes anything, i- it's sort of, again, I I don't get too tied up in the weeds of this stuff, what I care about is. Um, you know, some of the numbers of our ELL kids, our low performing kids, our our students on economically disadvantaged kids. What's their growth look like, our our kid, that's where, you know, Mr. D, you know, has done a really good job at. The, uh, middle school of the title one services, so he'll look at those sixth grade, you know, when the fifth grade numbers come in for the MCAS. He's looking at that bottom twenty five percent and saying, for math, we need title one support for these kids, we need additional support for these kids. That's why we've added the individual, that's why their growth numbers in the sixth grade and the seventh grade, or seventh and eighth grade continue to rise. Because we have targeted focused instruction on those kids that we've identified, that gives us that information.
You know, in example, the middle school does a fantastic job of this, um, one of the areas they've noticed the past two years, they were weakened, was your low income group. And they they didn't get the four points, they got one or two, so they pulled the data that came from Desi. Of every kid in the sixth, seventh and eighth grade who fit the low income profile, and they created ISSPs, individualized students' success plans. For those kids, when you look at some of the kids who are on ISSPs. They might be your kids who are getting your two forties, your two sixties and have growth of sixty or seventy, but at least now they have an ISSP. And it might just be providing emotional support, it might just be identifying a kid who you may not know fit into a subgroup. Who scores great, but now the teacher's like, this kid might need a little bit more emotional support, and now he's on or she's on their radar, so. It's given us a way to dive a little bit deeper into the data and identify kids and work with kids, not just to increase their MCAS scores or their growth scores. But just to help them out and, you know, touching back on what Jen said, on that whole child. As much as MCAS can do that. Okay, my last slide, questions.
I think we've asked a bunch, but. Any other questions?
So, just in terms of the sort of follow up, are we gonna, do you want us to schedule, I guess maybe question everybody. You wanna schedule something where we can ask more questions about really what the data shows and and give her deeper, give us a deeper narrative? Or you want us to leave that for those of us who are interested to to talk to Paul one on one or?
I mean, I'd leave it to your guidance.
I don't see a need for it, unless there's something you too wanna pull out and highlight that. Informs us of needs in the district or, you know, uh, something like that, but. I personally don't have a need to dive into it, but if you, like I said, if you, if there's parts of it that. That you wanna pull out that you think is meaningful for us to to talk about.
So I think, I I think there, there is some stuff, and I think maybe, you know, giving an update on the conversations that Paul has had with. Building liaisons, you know, department liaisons for math, ELA, and the things they're doing in each building, so Paul brings them in. Uh, and meets with, say, the ELA department for high school Mendez in the middle. And for the accountability piece and say, what's the data you're looking at and why is it important? And so I think those are good, good things to report out, how we're using that data.
Each of the buildings have looked at their data and the principals back in September, and they created an action plan for their high profile. Areas, um, some of it was easy to look at, others were, was a little bit more complicated, um. But we already have an action plan for for each of the buildings as to what's being done, you know, you look at, um.
Maybe a summary of that would be good.
The Mendez school.
Yeah, maybe, yeah, maybe a summary of that, yeah, of those action items and things, because I think it is important that.
No, and and the purpose of that was not to s- cut you off here, it's that when you have more information later down the road and you've seen. Um, you've taken, you've unpacked this, and it sounds like you've already had some of those conversations with the. Building folks, but maybe you're reporting back to us in the spring to let us know maybe what steps were taken. And where you might be seeing some progress or where you might be finding some challenges, does that make sense?
Sure, absolutely.
Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah, and and just for context, I mean, what I've, what I've been interested in the past, have been some of the conversations we've had about. What we've seen for growth, like we've done really well in the middle school in the last few years for levels of growth. And so that, that's been interesting for me to hear and understand, um, I don't know whether that's true or not true from this data. But those are the kind of things that I'm interested in, um, along with sort of what, you know, what are we, what are we doing with it, you know, what does it tell us? Uh, but I don't need to get into, you know, percentages and, you know, really into what does this number mean.
And interestingly enough, we, I have a meeting tomorrow to look at some of the high school growth numbers again and dive a little bit deeper into it. What we found with the growth numbers was, if you look, we had five sections of honors, English, ten last year. Out of the five, only two of those sections had over fifty percent growth, the other three sections, one had mid thirties, one had. Low forties and one had mid forties, so you would expect you. Intuitively, you might think that your low numbers are coming from your CP two classes, and they are in some of those classes. But the question we're gonna ask tomorrow is, how come in our honors classes, now, kids did great, they all scored two sixty, two seventies. So their MCAS scores were off the charts, but why did you have three of the five sections? Why did you have three of the five sections under fifty percent growth? And it might just be when you do an item analysis of those five of those maybe fifteen, twenty kids. Maybe they all missed the same question all the way through, and that wasn't something that was taught that year or drilled that year. And it could be the difference between one or two questions to look at, so be an interesting data dive tomorrow.
Yeah, that sounds.
Yeah, doesn't it?
Yeah, it does.
As interesting as that level of data diving can be.
Well, but that's the kinda, that's the the place where you really.
Eric, you wanna come, eleven o'clock tomorrow.
Anything else? Everybody good?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, superintendent's report.
Yeah, I'll just briefly, right, I had a list of twelve things I wrote down, um, no, uh, I I a couple of things. That have have happened over the last few weeks, but obviously, uh, spent a lot of time and Mr. Kendall mentioned as well, you know, with the Mendez School Building Committee and. In the process there, getting ready for a, um, request for service, uh, for a project manager, uh, is is forthcoming. Uh, we've had a couple of meetings and we have a meeting next week as well, um, and, uh, you know. Go from there, the blueprint, uh, working group is is been, uh, hard at work and we're. You know, we'll get together again after the new year, uh, survey had a four hundred plus respondents, which was great. Helped us redefine some of our improvement priorities and and we spent a couple hours of of redefining and and writing. Um, uh, those up again, I I spent last week, I had I had a, I don't know if it was Wednesday or Thursday, I spent. Got invited to Sudbury to talk to Sudbury, um, schools, uh, with regard to school start times. Uh, and then invited down to, uh, King Philip to to do a television program in Norfolk at their, um, on the same topic. Julie Kinney, uh, her husband is Jeff Kinney, the, uh, diary of the Wampa kid, um, who was awesome, and I've I've. She's invited me down a number of times, so the the one cost benefit I get is my kids, uh, she's invited me, uh, the boys to to Jeff's studio.
Oh, wow.
Over over the break.
You're gonna say you gotta.
Yeah, so.
Got him to come in here and do it for you.
Yeah, so, um, so that's exciting, uh, budget workshop is Saturday, um, for the school committee. For Paul and I were framing up state last week, we've already begun the process of recruitment, uh, for new teaching staff and, um. You know, we're going into Boston in March and we've got Bridgewater State and, you know, is our, is our retirees and people. Uh, who are leaving the district, uh, that turnover begins right around January, February, the beginning of it, uh, we know some retirees already. So at least we're getting out there and and having conversations, um, and again, i- it's that conversation of how do we create a more diverse. Um, uh, teaching, um, and, you know, population, um, and it's difficult. Um, you know, everyone's struggling with the same thing there, um, I did a Zoom outreach session the other night, had twenty two was the high, I think, at one point. Which is, which is pretty good. Lot of, lot of people I hadn't, um, hadn't seen, uh, online or even in person before, so. They did ask questions and I basically went through, you know, uh, the next one I think will be a lot more question oriented, I I I sort of wanted to give just an overview and a background of. Of things that are going on in the district with the with the budget and the building committee and the blueprint and, um, so we focused on those things, um.
You have any sense of of, you know, sort of, uh, what age students those parent, whether their parents.
It was actually all, it was, I I do know a number of the parents, it was actually pre K through twelve, uh, there were all of them. And I, three administrators were on board, uh, it was, it was good.
Was that invitation sent out to the community as a whole or just?
Uh, yeah, I actually sent it, um, I sent it to Jen Ball to have it sent out, I don't know if it ever got out there, but. So that'll be the strategy is they have their listserv as well, that they can send it, uh, probably next time I might, cause I don't do Facebook, maybe next time I'll have someone. Uh, put it on the Ashland Facebook page, um, things like that, so, to, you know, I wanted to see how. Parents emailed me who actually weren't, didn't go on and say, they said thank you, because seven thirty at night, young parents, kids are in bed. It's easy to actually access it from home, uh, and it was much, um, that was, that was the feedback I got even that night, so. So, it's just one more way we're trying to communicate, and and the last thing I wanna say, um. And we didn't talk about it, uh, at the beginning or even during the updates, but I can't. You know, I can't say enough about Kelly, uh, St. Kerr and and the staff, um, at the high school and, um. Yesterday was a, you know, Nicole was there and, um. It was a hard day for a lot of us yesterday, um, we did a, uh, had an opportunity to to honor, uh, Olivia Beaton and. Um, and her dad Chris, and for those who who don't know, um, you know, Olivia's dad Chris is not well. Um, he's been battling cancer for a lot of years and, um, we held a, you know, a ceremony yesterday, uh, with the handing of her diploma. With with Chris and and thank, thank the Ashland firefighters and police and the first responders here to to work and get Chris. Uh, to the high school and the and the high school staff was there, um, and i- it was, it was hard, um, touching. Um, and, but it it goes to show, and and I had a teacher email us today and. And say, it goes to show a lot about this community and about, uh, the people in this community, uh, and. How giving they are and how much they care for one another, and and I knew Chris, obviously, Chris was was my first dean when I was the principal of the high school. Um, and so then he had moved on to Tri County after as an assistant principal there, um, but we had stayed in touch and, you know, it's. It was just touching, it was moving, and I'm I'm proud of of, of the, you know, the thoughtfulness. Of of the people, uh, at the high school, um, and, you know, I think Kelly called me on the weekend and said, we're gonna do this, and I said, great, it's awesome. Uh, you know, I'm so proud of you for for making that memory, and and that was sort of this theme yesterday, right? Was it, it's the memory for for that, the Beaton family, which, um, so, that that that's all I wanted to say. That's all I have.
Chris was my hockey coach.
Yeah, right, so, right, we know how involved he was if he didn't, so, yeah.
Okay, you have to follow that up.
It it true, I mean, you saw, it was truly touching, um. Just a quick thing on my report, uh, it ties back into what Jen said, some of the MCAS thing we talked about. We started last month and did it again yesterday, doing some vertical teams with our our teachers, we had about fifteen teachers from across the district. In both science and math on different days, we're gonna do ELA. in both science and math on different days. We're gonna do ELA coming up, um, get together to talk about curriculum. And, um, they spent about an hour and a half to two hours going back to our UBD documents to make sure that they're current, they're relevant, and, and they're up to date. But then I allowed them for the last four hours of the day to create their own agendas. And a lot of what they wanted to do was to dive into the curriculum, to dive into their lesson plans, and to dive into how they can make the curriculum and the content relevant and come alive for kids and how they can make sure they're hitting all the standards. They spent a big portion of the time, Mindes talking to Warren and then the middle, middle talking to Mindes and, and the high school. So, which is really great to have that opportunity for a full day to have teachers get together to do that. And we're gonna continue doing that throughout the year. Um, on January eighteenth, we have a full-day PD. The morning half, we have about, um, fifteen to twenty different educators coming in and doing different presentations for staff. Um, we're gonna send it out live to teachers on, I believe, Monday or Tuesday of next week for them to sign up for. I'm gonna include you on the signup list if you'd like to attend, or even if you don't want to attend. Just be able to take a look at some of the, uh, different options that, that's available to staff for PD. Anything from SCL to, um, English language learners to how to use a green screen to making Twitter, um, relevant, so a lot of great stuff. So, look at it.
Okay.
It's an invite. Everyone likes to get invited to the dance.
Yeah. Thank you.
And then finally, w- we started the process and we sent a survey out today to really do a deep exam of our current literacy program. We've been using Journeys, uh, for the past seven years. It's been a bumpy road, the seven years that we have used it. And since we purchased the Journeys, um, two thousand and eleven series, two other versions have come out. So it's time that we start analyzing what we're going, what are the next steps for pre-K to five in our literacy program. So we started that process. Should take us about a year to look at the different options and then, uh, come forward with a recommendation to the superintendent and, and to you. And then we need to make sure we budget for it. But as we're looking at our ELA scores and we're looking at MCAS and we're looking at the complexities of, um, early childhood literacy and also looking at how our demographics have changed with our ELL population, our special education population, and the program that we purchased seven, eight years ago, is it still relevant and current to meet the needs of our kids? Or are teachers pulling in from twenty-seven different resources to meet the needs? So we started that process and I'll be sure to give you an update on that.
Mr. Journeys is just the K through five?
Journeys is just K through five, correct.
Is, is that the one you said you had told us that you, wasn't being, had never been really implemented the proper way?
Correct.
And so you said you were gonna implement it the proper way this year?
So we started.
But you already know now that maybe it's not really.
We started implementing it last year with the focus wall that all teachers had to cover, the anchor text.
Yeah.
And then the guided readers. And the teachers had a little bit of flexibility as to how they addressed all the issues in there. But what we're getting at is people are pulling things in back and forth. And really, it was doomed to start. When, when, when something goes top-down and teachers don't have the buy-in, um, it just doesn't work. So we've tried many different approaches to try to get it to work and, uh, the scores are okay. They could be better in some of our lower grades with ELA, but we really want that full buy-in and we really want a program that's gonna meet the needs of kids and get them excited about reading and writing and learning.
So you're starting that process now, figure out what, what new one do we wanna get?
Correct. So we, so the first step we did is we just create with, in the process of creating a twenty, a fifteen to twenty-point checklist as to what we value in a system. And then we can go out and start looking at the different options that are available.
Great. Okay.
That's all I have.
All right.
So I got.
Kathy?
Okay, my turn. Hold on a second. All right. All right. Between November twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen, and December eleventh, two thousand and eighteen, I, Kathleen Bates, authorized by my signature payables in the amount of seven hundred sixty-three thousand, five hundred twenty-two dollars and nineteen cents. This includes general fund expenses of six hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred sixty-three dollars and twenty-seven cents. Revolving expenses of fifty thousand, five hundred eighty dollars and four cents. Grant expenses of twelve thousand, nine hundred seventy-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents. Finally, I authorize payroll in the amount of one million, two hundred eleven thousand, five hundred eighty-seven dollars and forty-five cents.
Thank you.
You are welcome.
Thank you for keeping the light on.
This month.
Yeah, and then we're jumping to the minutes.
Correct.
Uh, November fourteenth. Who's got what?
So I, I, the, the updated ones, I just, uh, I had asked, uh, Erin to include some of the details about the votes we had on the policies. Um, so just 'cause we just had, you know, votes on, on a couple of them that didn't have any details of what we discussed or what we were modifying. So I just had her, uh, uh, update those for, for the twelve, for the fourteenth. So you should have the updated ones that have that detail.
Is everybody good with the updated versions? We have a motion to accept those minutes of November fourteenth, twenty eighteen.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then November twenty-eighth?
So moved.
Uh, well, so, so there was, there was.
Paul, Paul added some depth and to it.
Well, so, 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 so the original one was you were absent. Well, you weren't absent, you just came, so it was, uh, uh, so there was an adjustment to say when you, when you came to the meeting and then an adjustment with the final vote to be, uh, five oh, as opposed to four.
Yeah, okay, good. Everybody okay with those changes?
Yes.
Now it's moved.
Okay, second. Does anyone have a second for that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you. Do we have any gifts and donations to see?
We do. Uh, we've got a few and, um, Bill Gath, fifty dollars to the clocker idol. Um, Bose Corporation, fourteen hundred dollars for Sound Robot Materials, um, for the middle school. Uh, Follett Books, thirty-two, uh, dollars, twenty-five cents, um, for the middle school and the PBIS funds, uh, from, for the social, um, for the middle school as well. And in addition to, uh, the help of Ashland's, uh, Helping Our Own Fund, uh, there was a ten thousand dollar anonymous donation received yesterday, uh, for a total of twelve thousand, two hundred eighty-two dollars and twenty-five cents.
Wow.
Awesome.
Do we have a motion to accept the gifts and donations? So moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And may I ask, I'd love to give an update. I had talked to Jen Shields, um, over the weekend and, and I said I'd like to give an update about the help in our, our own fund and how that's been utilized, considering the, you know, another ten thousand dollars was donated, um, on Monday, so.
Another what, ten thousand?
Ten thousand is what, yeah, yeah. So I, I just wanna, you know, read some of the things that are happening with the funding.
Excellent.
So she wrote this and sent it to me. Uh, "The Helping Our Own Fund continues to be a financial resource in providing students and families assistance. The need is demonstrated as a result of the financial challenges many of our families are experiencing. Over the past year, the fund has been utilized by all district schools in various ways. Examples of the assistance include paying for school field trips, yearbooks, prom, senior week, car expenses, clothing, book fair vouchers for students who are on free and reduced lunch, and grocery store gift cards needed in a pinch. We have also been able to ensure youth program involvement such as summer camps, swim lessons, uh, sport necessities such as wrestling gear and cleats. We're quite confident that the quality of life for many children and their families has been improved as a result of this amazing fund. The current monetary balance is four thousand, two hundred ninety-nine dollars and twelve cents, with another one thousand dollars in gift cards and cash to be utilized on an emergency basis." Coincidentally, the generous donators, um, provided another check in the amount of ten thousand dollars on Friday, uh, to add to the fund. So that balance now is fourteen thousand, two hundred ninety-nine dollars. And they wanted to do so to make sure that any needs during this holiday season were fully met. So.
That's very generous.
Yeah, so.
Thank you for updating us on that. It's nice to.
Thank you. Anonymous benefactor.
And thank you to Mr. and Mrs. Anonymous Persons.
Correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Right.
All right.
Thanks, Jim.
Member updates? Nicole, do you wanna start? Do you have anything you wanna share in addition?
So I am still working on college applications. I have three more to get in.
Woo-hoo.
Hassle and I am.
You're so close.
Patiently waiting for an acceptance or a rejection. I just want something. I was nominated for student of the term for integrity.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Not surprised.
So, and I think they had the breakfast on Friday. I think that's a great thing that they do to recognize those that were nominated but not necessarily picked. Um, unfortunately, I couldn't go out to attend my grandmother's wake, but, sorry. Thank you. Um, but yeah, just keep tugging along and it's going.
It's December and before you know it, it's May. And, you know, and, and it's, once these, uh, you know, college, you know, applications are done and get some breather, so.
Excellent, thank you. Paul?
Uh, so like the rest of us, I attended town meeting after our last meeting.
We had that too, I guess.
You know, so, uh, still lots of great things happening at these meetings, right? So congratulations to our, uh, first responders for, uh, you know, the passage of, of, of the, you know, town funding for, for the new public safety. That's a huge thing. And, you know, several other very important, you know, things from the rail transit district, their things to, that secures a lot of, uh, great things for the town as well. So, um, we had a Mindes Site Council meeting. Uh, Jim mentioned, uh, we had our first, uh, OPM Selection Subcommittee meeting. Uh, and so what we're, what that committee's doing is, uh, putting, putting together the RFS for, uh, uh, getting an OPM. So I think we've, we've got, uh, draft in just for feedback from the MSBA, uh, and we have a meeting next week, two weeks?
Monday, the seventeenth.
Yeah, next week. Um, uh, that will try to finalize, uh, and, and, and submit a final draft for approval, uh, that we can get into, um, to start that process. Um, just a shout-out to the, you know, the, to the high school students that, uh, run the Make-A-Wish classes. Uh, both my kids have, you know, a second session this year and, you know, it's just really cool. They, they enjoy it. Um, and, uh, I attended the, uh, the Make-A-Wish Winter Fest, uh, over, over the weekend as well. We had a policy subcommittee meeting yesterday, um, and, uh, fifth and sixth grade band concert was last night, I think. You know, you were there as well, um, which was, they did. I didn't know what to expect. This was the first, uh, first time and I've only heard my, my student, uh, be practicing, but they, they did, they did a great job, so.
Always sounds better when they put them all together.
Right, what's amazing is, right, they have two separate, a- and then they come together for the first time on stage. And it, you wouldn't think that for a moment that they haven't been practicing together. It's really good.
Yeah, um, I would say my schedule's a little lighter than Mr. Kendall's, um, but, um.
All of us are.
What I would say about town meeting, it was one of the first town meetings where you walked out smiling. I was really feeling like, you know, I, I think the override a couple of years ago was pretty divisive and pretty disheartening. And then to see some of the same people that were, I, I don't wanna say against you, but definitely like not supportive of the override. Though everybody, except for like those random three people that had their hands up, we're all in it together for the multitude of things that were on the docket that night. And just like that, there's all these little parts of the community, whether it's the RTD and the YMCA and how impactful that's gonna be. And even thinking about how impactful that's gonna be for our students and, um, the public safety building and just changing even what one thirty-five looks like in that section of town. I just think it's like, this is like the next big step and it felt really, really good. So.
Thanks, Erin.
Yeah, I've been encouraged by, um, the la- I think the last three town meetings, uh, the, the attendance has been up. So hopefully it's, hopefully it's a, a trend that'll keep going, 'cause pe- people are, are paying attention and coming, so it's great. Um, yeah, we had our policy subcommittee yesterday. That's always good. And, uh, we will keep working and be bringing policies to you next time. And I attended the ASHPAC, uh, monthly meeting.
Uh, I, I just echo the, the comments about, um, town meeting. I think the last few, we feel like this community, we've probably just made a lot of progress. Um, I agree with that. Also, the, um, the band concert, I always wanna give a shout-out to Mr. Conick.
Oh, yeah.
Does such a great job with that. And I think it's, um, it's really impressive to see the progress that kids go from being the fifth grade band to the sixth grade band, which is, of course, the two of them there, one after the other. And just, it's amazing what a year, the difference a year makes with, uh, with that. Of course, the night before I came in here, I was over at the EDP Variety Show and, um, let's say, um, Miss Melissa, in a, in a typical fashion, just continues to come up with great ideas for that program and, um, kids did a great job and graduation to all of them.
Um, and he said, by the time we get to me, it's like ditto, ditto, ditto. Yes, town meeting was fabulous. Um, have not been in front of the camera since the Make-A-Wish trip, which was unbelievable. And I'm sure we'll be hearing more about that from some students from the club. We'll come and give us some more details. But, um, for those of you who are listening, when, um, Olivia said that there was special effort this year to, um, with the folks that run the place to come out and talk to our students and tell them, um, how incredibly impressed they were with everything about our students, their behavior, their commitment to this cause, the way they were treating each other, the enthusiastic approach to, um, to the families. And, and that's, you know, I, I was just so, so proud. I was there when, when, when that happened and, um, it was a really, really proud moment for me. I mean, I wasn't surprised, 'cause I've been spending some days with these kids and it was, I was not surprised at all. But when you get that recognition, um, that was really something. Um, and of course, we all attended the conference together. I've not been back here since then either. And then town meeting and then we had, um, I attended the Mindes Programming Meeting. And also, um, Ashland High School Site Council Meeting. And I think that's it for me.
The Mindes Programming, so how's that going? Are we, are you guys coming to us?
It's coming, you know, I think we're, we're wrapping it up pretty soon. Um, there, there'd been some discussion and some data and some surveys and some findings and, and Maureen, who's been, done a terrific job running it.
Our last official meeting was on Tuesday.
Oh, it already was?
Correct.
Yeah.
So her, her intent is to spend the holiday break putting together a report and then, uh, I think she said on her agenda that we had on Tuesday was to come to school committee in February and do a presentation.
Okay.
And then is that, once the presentation happens, um, Jim, is that like a decision that we make? Is it a decision you make? Like, how does?
There, there are no decisions of anything at this point. I haven't seen any, I, I literally have not been a part of any conversation.
It's just a pragmatic review.
It's, it's just a review of the programming.
Yeah.
And I'm sure there'll be some information in there.
That would lead to the next conversation. And if there were a decision to be made, it, it's, uh, you know, it would be under the purview of the school.
Correct, right, yeah.
But I, I think the, the first step is just having her report the findings and then we would talk about whether they're even, you know, is, you know, until we, until you, which she has to say. I mean, even Paul and I have been sitting in the meetings all year, uh, or more than a year, and we don't know what, what she's gonna say. I mean, we've, we've been taking, um, this in increments in terms of the information gathering, so.
And quite, quite, quite likely, the first usage of the information will probably be during the feasibility study.
Correct.
For Mindes.
Right.
Oh, right, okay.
So, uh, the MSBA in that process is gonna be analyzing our, our program.
Space.
Having already done it, with, that, that'll, that, that positions us to lead that conversation as opposed to somebody else to, you know, so.
Sure.
She's not gonna make any recommendations coming, it's all just fact-finding and reporting out. And then we take that information and decide what we wanna do with it. But there aren't any recommendations that coming up, that are coming.
Yeah, that wasn't her purview. We did not charge her with telling us, you know, what her thoughts were.
Okay.
She, she's more than willing to.
Absolutely.
Um, no Dr. Cohen, but, um, she, she certainly, um.
So when she's here, are we allowed to?
You can, but I think she'll be pretty reserved.
Okay.
Great.
It'd be my guess.
And just like thinking of the timing with the MSBA, would we have to, like, if we notice something where we may want to revisit the viability of the program or, or the, just the construct, where are we in the process for the building?
It'd be over the next three years. We'd have to have any of those conversations.
Okay, so we have a little bit of time.
We got a lot of time.
The earliest we can go back to the MSBA with, hey, we're ready, uh, is twenty twenty-one.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so part of the design and that, all that kinda process i- is twenty-four, thirty-six months away with the feasibility, the design, all that stuff. That's when those conversations will occur. So, we, we've got quite a bit of time.
Good. You have a lot of time to talk.
We do.
And discuss these things.
Yeah, absolutely.
Perfect.
Okay, I guess we're moving on to the action items.
Cross some things off.
Yeah, so Subcommittee for Recognition Strategy, uh, we recognize.
I think we probably need to put us, you know, have one more meeting, put a stake in the ground and, and be done with it.
And finish that up.
So we, we need to schedule that.
MSBA Building Committee, I, I, that's ongoing, right?
It's ongoing, absolutely. Yep, we'll just change that.
Yeah, so I mean, uh, we can either remove it, 'cause we'll be.
We'll do updates anyway.
Yeah, I think it's gonna, from this point, for the next few years, it's gonna be part of your superintendent's report.
It's just gonna be part of our report, so we'll just remove it.
So either that or you can move it into an, an agenda item or whatever, but I don't think it needs to be an action.
Yeah, fees and, you know, part of a summer workshop.
Right. Right.
RTI, that happened today. SCL, today. Accountability, today. We could talk about potential follow-up on that in the spring, if there's anything to report.
I'll just put it on there in the holiday discussions.
Discussion of Columbus Day in the summer.
Well, was the Columbus Day was gonna be separate, like maybe this winter, by renaming it for next year? But the calendar holidays in general would be a summer workshop?
Yeah, no, I thought, I, I guess I thought it was gonna be an entire com, I'm sorry. We can change the calendar anytime. I just thought the whole conversation was gonna be a summer.
It's a good summer workshop topic.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause it doesn't, I mean, we're gonna change the calendar a couple of times.
The text on the calendar, changing it, we can, we could do that, you know, a week before, and if we wanted to. So there, there's nothing, there's nothing set in stone about that.
And we will be coming back, I mean, honestly, with the calendar, there'll be, I had some conversations today with Sarah Davidson at Pittaway with regard to, you know, our early release days and parent-teacher conferences, even at, at the Pittaway level, aligning those to Warren. So we'll be changing, and, and we still don't know the exact prom date for, crazy enough, twenty twenty. Uh, we have a holder number date in there, but we don't know the exact date yet, because the sophomores haven't finalized that. So we, we always come back, even though we've got the next two years of calendar set, we always come back with little tweaks here and there, so.
And that's it?
I make a motion for Journeys.
Still moved.
No, I, I, I gave the motion. It came from this side of the table, not that side of the table.
It's all good. All in favor?
Was it?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Put stuff in there to sign there.